Two hundred to one.
Hey, it's two oh one P M. And I'd like to call the order of the Georgetown Divide Public Utility District, regular meeting of the Board of Directors. Due to Director Thornborough's absence via appearance via Zoom, I would like for him to explain a legitimate reason for your absence and we be voting on your attendance via Zoom. Oh, my attendance?
Yes, we have to vote to.
Point order.
Can I move that we do adoption of the agenda first?
We have to do this first.
So we can switch to that agenda item?
Okay, I developed a really bad cough and congestion starting to come on. And I didn't feel that I don't know what it is, and I didn't feel that I should come down there and risk. Spreading it spreading it to you guys. Well, except Donna, that would have been okay.
That would have been fine. It sounds legitimate to me. Thank you, Mike.
We've got a motion to accept the Director Thornborough's participation via that AB two four four nine amendment to the Brown Act.
I can't really hear whoever's talking.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
I have a question. I'd like to confirm that he is within the borders of the district.
He does not have.
I thought that would have. I thought that was.
And you also were gonna be going over that policy to affect me.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
We will skip Director Thornborough for them.
Hi.
Director Saunders.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Could you speak up, please? Moving forward. Thank you.
And we're gonna abstain Director Thornborough from that vote just because it was pertaining to him. But now you can continue on with your.
Okay, Director Seaman, would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, that wasn't.
Sorry.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote first.
Thank you.
Take a roll call vote, please.
So let's see Director Thornborough.
Here.
Director Stovall.
Present.
Director Saunders.
Here.
Vice President Seaman.
Here.
And President.
Here.
Okay, let's try this one more time.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to lead this through the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution of the nation, our God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before we move forward, I just need to make sure you guys understand how we have to move forward now that we have a director appearing remotely through the AB two four four nine process. And so before the board can make, take any action on anything else, Director Thornborough needs to announce whether he has any other individual in the room with him and if they are over the age of eighteen.
No.
No, he says no. Okay. And then additionally, we just need to make sure that everybody understands that if there is any kind of technical difficulties with the Zoom or the Internet connection that allows the public to attend, that all, everything in the meeting must stop. Nothing can move forward if there's any kind of technical difficulties until they are resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarification for that. Can the closed session items from the current since that's the closed section?
Correct, the closed session can move forward regardless.
Wait. May I get a motion to adopt the agenda? So move. Roll call vote, please. Any public? No, hang on one second. I.
What's actually the agenda adoption?
Oh, right.
Right now. One more, we have, we're gonna vote on the agenda and then we're gonna do.
Yeah. Okay, roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Hi.
Director. Director Thornborough.
Hi.
Director Saunders.
Hi.
Vice President Seaman.
Hi.
And President.
Hi. Okay, agenda adopted. Moving on to public forum. Pursuant to the government code section five four nine five four point three to Brown Act, members of the public shall be afforded the opportunity to speak on any agenda item. The board president will call for public comment on each item. Those wishing to address the board on a matter that is not on the agenda and within the jurisdictional authority of the district may do so during the public forum portion of the agenda. Follow the procedures I'm gonna list below for speaking during public forum or public comment. Public members desiring to provide comments must raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the board president, speak from the podium and begin by stating your name. If participating via teleconference, please utilize the raise your hand feature. The president will call upon you by addressing you by name or phone number indicated. Comment must be directed to the board only. Disruptive conduct shall not be permitted at any board meeting. Persistence in the disruptive behavior shall be grounds for summary termination of the privileges to address the board director. There is a five minute time limit per speaker, twenty minutes in total. The board is not permitted to take action or address items addressed during the public forum. Finally, the board president is responsible for maintaining an orderly meeting. So at this time, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Stand up.
Yeah, yes. No, it's.
I apologize.
No. Yeah, just your name. It's Larry, right?
Larry Brown.
Okay.
So my stepfather has had a property of her in Morgan Ranch looking for seventies. And I've had it for the last five years. And with the weather, especially this year, in the past, I haven't really worried about my bill, okay? So this last year, I was looking at it because I was stuck in my house again. And looking at it thinking, what's going on? I mean, my bill basically says base charge sixty one dollars and seventy six cents a month. Okay? The standard, I've checked with some of my neighbors. I've got a supplement fee of thirty dollars and sixteen cents that I'm paying for, I think Auburn Trails, you know, area, which I cannot drive into because they have a gate. So I'm paying for them. They have a gate to keep me out. And my water consumption bill is six dollars and forty three cents. So you guys sent out this little flyer about saving water. Okay? What am I supposed to do? My water consumption is six dollars and forty three cents. What are you doing to save what cost on your side? That's my question to you. Now you've put in smart meters. I have done multimillion dollar projects, energy, water and F T savings over the years of my previous career. F T savings are full time equivalent. Labor savings. So I don't have a look to your contract, what you did put in the smart meters, but there should be F T savings and also deferred maintenance savings. Okay? So is my water bill gonna go down because I'm paying for water? I'm paying fucking Auburn Lake Trails, thirty dollars and sixteen cents, and I can't even drive in there.
Can you just clarify that?
Sure.
You're not paying for anything in Auburn Lake Trails. You're paying for the treatment plant that is adjacent to Auburn Lake Trails. It's actually the sweet water, water treatment plant.
Treatment for what waste?
It's a water treatment plant. So all the water up here is surface water, so it has to be treated. You're paying for the water treatment plant construction.
For supplying water where?
To you.
To me.
To the, there's two treatment plants here, one.
Appreciate the clarification.
But I've missed from that. Yeah, so so it's, I understand it is a little confusing because it does say Auburn Lake Trails and we actually changed the name of the plant to clarify that. It's not within the gate. It's actually outside the gate.
Okay, so with the smart meters, did you guys get F T savings and defer maintenance? Why am I not seeing that on my bill?
So we to to see to realize any savings along those lines, we will have to a full rate study. We cannot just adjust those rates without having some sort of rate study done.
Was that a guarantee savings contract?
It is a Prop two eighteen law in the state of California. Any public entity cannot adjust up or down rates without having a full rate study done.
So was it a guaranteed savings?
You're.
I have done federal governments. I want to say, I want a reward for the Air Force stuck in in the low global things on savings, so.
So the federal government and the state of California have completely different rules. I understand what you're saying and I.
I've done the states too.
Okay, so have you done the local government where they are going to have a rate for the customer?
So getting back to my question, my water consumption is six dollars and forty three cents and I'm paying a hundred dollars a month. Are you guys socialists or communists?
I gotta answer that.
And Cherie. On the floor.
Okay, I would expect the board to pay attention to the following issues. The two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollar discrepancy. As of this date, I have not received any comment or correction to the apparent two hundred and eighty eight thousand discrepancy between the G M's twelve thirty one twenty two and the twelve thirty one twenty two fiber budget summary. As noted at the February fourteen to twenty twenty three meeting. I hope it's not your intent to sweep this under the rug as I am now formally requesting a clarification to this item. I am submitting a P R A for this information. It appears there's a problem with the Zoom system cutting calls off. Please address this issue if not everybody have a backup. It is your duty to assure that all of those in making comments at meetings have the ability to do so. And I make this note for the record as I was cut off at the start of the three six twenty three meeting. I also was threatened with being cut off by the G M, which I find to be quite rude. The board needs to look at how the current G M treats the district's customers. I made this comment and observation for the record and I'm referring to the two twenty three twenty three finance and the two sixteen twenty three irrigations committee meetings. Number four, please show us some a policy section that allows a staff person to conduct a formal meeting. If the board president is incapacitated, the vice president assumes the duties. I am now formally requesting this information and I'm submitting a P R A for this information. It appears that you did not properly notice the March sixth twenty twenty three closed meeting and the topic for which it was held may not have fit within the parameters of what can be discussed in a closed session. Having interviews of potential legal service providers does not appear on the approved list of closed session topics. I am requesting copies of the source that allows you to have such a meeting and a parent violation of the Brown Act's closed session rules. I'm submitting a P R A for this information. On today's closed session agenda, personnel managers, general manager evaluation, six month review at the February fourteenth twenty twenty three regular board meeting, the district's attorney Christina Pritchard stated per the G M's employment contract that the review could not take place prior to the actual six months of employment and therefore would need to be done at the April eleventh regular board meeting. Please provide in writing the authority and circumstances under which her direction has been bypassed. I am submitting a P R A for this information. And I am submitting these written comments for the record in the minutes of this meeting, March fourteenth twenty twenty three. Thank you.
There's a pocket for you. And we make that part of the record.
Christina, would you like to address the galleries?
Would. First of all, informational requests don't fall under the Public Records Act, but that's okay because I can answer your legal questions that you posed. To start with the general manager evaluation, I did state that under the contract, under the effective date of the contract, it appeared that Mr. Schneider couldn't be evaluated until the April meeting, but moments after that, he corrected me and stated that he actually started prior to what was listed in the contract and the contract states six months after his start date. So today does actually fall within that start date and we are okay to move forward with that city or general manager evaluation. As for the Brown Act, I.
What was that?
I'm not having a reception with you right now. I'm just answering your questions. So if you can hold on for just a moment so that I can get through them. For the alleged Brown Act violation or potential, a local agency under government code section five four nine five seven can hold interviews for positions such as their general counsel position in closed session. So that was property properly agendized and properly held.
But can I ask, and then why wasn't that code put on the agenda so it wasn't properly agendized? That code was not on the agenda.
Point of order, public comments are done. We should be.
Yeah, we have to, we have one more question.
Karen, the floor is yours.
Hi, I just wanted to make a, just to mention to Larry Brown that the water bill is for two months, not one. That's all.
Well, I know it's two months. Thank you.
Well, he mentioned a month, so just wanted to make that clear to him.
I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you, Karen.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dowd.
Stephen Dowd. Thank you, Larry. As you guys know, everybody in this room knows, we've got a lot of water this year. It's coming out every place that we never expected it to come out. And I want you guys to fight harder so that we don't have to have rules that say that we can, we should rather take a shower than a bath. I mean, I saw that on the paper and it's like, what the heck? It's none of you guys' business. If we take a shower or bath, I know it's a recommendation, but it's it's our water. We pay for this stuff. You guys want us to, you want us to buy water, right? We, you want us to buy water, the more water you sell, the more money you make and you should be begging us to buy more water.
I wish it was that easy.
It is that easy. Just tell us.
State of California won't let us do that, unfortunately.
Well, if it keeps raining like this, they're gonna have water coming out places they never even heard of. I mean, it's ridiculous. This, I've only seen it rain harder one year. And that was about ten years ago. We got a hundred and twenty inches of rain. And we're up in the sixties, maybe getting close to seventy by now. And this is a, you guys need to fight for us. You know, we need to, these moving regulations gotta go. I mean, and we conserve up here, we're conservatives up here. We can serve on everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. One more public comment. Let's move forward to the consent calendar. Any board member changes? Or corrections? I have a comment about the meeting of the minutes. Mr. Stovall, go ahead.
It says in the minutes that general manager referred to the trip to Washington C C as a junket.
I did not refer to anything as a junket.
I wanted to clarify that. It says in here that it, he pointed out the importance to go on these quote junkets.
And that that's not the word you used, if I recall.
That is, we will adjust that.
I think a member of the public did.
Yeah, I think that was a comment from.
Cherie did. Public screen. Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Correct the tape if that's what.
We will, we will adjust that and make sure that's.
Director Thornborough? Any changes, sir? You're muted. There you go.
Sort of.
So it's the consent calendar. There was a question. It's technically open. So I would like for this, if there's a quick comment from the public, I would, you may open it for the public.
Okay. Go ahead.
Over on the meeting minutes.
Yes. Yes.
It's probably more a procedural thing, but in the meeting packet, it has Director Saunders' board report for March underneath the February meeting minutes. And those were supposed to go on the website. Because they weren't in the packet for March.
We also included the minutes.
But now, but we're doing the February minutes. This is the March, is March comments.
It's March.
You look at that. And then my comments that I put in for the record are shoved clear to the bottom, which they need to be with the minutes.
We'll look at that.
Just a more of a procedural thing.
Okay, we may. All the comments are known.
Yes, yes, we will. Take note and make corrections where we need to. Nicholas, would you like to make a comment?
No, I've done.
Okay, may I? May I get a roll call vote for approval of the minutes? So move.
We need a motion in a second.
All right, a motion to approve the minutes.
If I make a motion that we approve the minutes, they will be amended and corrected.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Director, or sorry, Treasurer Thornborough.
Hi.
Director Stovall.
Hi.
Director Saunders.
Hi.
Vice President Seaman.
Hi.
And President.
Hi. Motion passes. Now we're into financial reports section. Up to January thirty first, Budget to Actuals Report.
So I'd like to take letters A through D and we'll do any questions on budget to actual report, food cash report, monthly check report, year to date vendor report, and then I will, I'd like to to save the capital improvement plan budget review for all those questions that I answered.
Proceed, please. Yeah.
From the board.
Director Saunders.
We're getting there. I know we have our grant proceeds show up in the water fund and there's subtracted for balance purposes. Well, it gives us a deficit under the water. And especially if it's progressive grants, we're not down to get grants or in the projected should be subtracted from the budget. So you do have five hundred thousand subtracting from the water fund. So we don't want to have a negative loss.
Look at that. Yeah, I understand. Thank you for that, Tommy.
And then, let's see the other thing. Oh, for the, when we do the budget, so one of the things, it's the grants as well, so we normally don't include the C I P. But when we do a total budget, it's better that we include those. And when you show the breakdown of the percentage that we're actually spending in the district, it clearly shows the amount we're spending on C I P versus staff versus salary, that'll be reflected because right now it's not reflected because we don't put the C I P budget in there and that'll show a better reflection of how we're breaking down.
Yeah, I think I'd like to suggest a slight amendment to that. And you'll look over that when we go over our C I P budget because we do have some projects that we would like to propose this year that would be dependent upon grant proceeds. So I E. They are, it would be approved in the C I P budget, but only if we were to receive the grant proceeds as they are laid out. So there is a way of accepting grant proceeds into your capital improvement plan as part of your capital improvement plan as opposed to into your general fund so you could see where you're spending money. So I will go over those changes as we, as they come up.
And then the other thing is we have our interest incomes spread out in several places. So now that we're invested in all that one category, we're gonna have a single place.
I think unfortunately, some of those accounts have to be separated because of the types of accounts that they are. But we will definitely look into that and I'll give an update. We have not started investing yet because we are still working in signatories.
So consolidate where you can.
Yeah, we will do that. We will consolidate where we can. Some of those are specialized accounts for specific project or specific like loans or other things that we have. And so they, they, some of them have to remain separate, but we will consolidate as much as we.
Yeah, I brought that up in the meeting that there are, there are different buckets, although it is the sole, you know, the C D S.
Director Saunders, could you please speak up a little? I can barely hear you.
Sorry, we gotta move that on. And there's also a way to change the settings. All right, better? Or the same?
It's bad.
No, that's that's better.
Okay. Now I was saying during the investment.
Much better.
I said we did have stuff in different buckets and although we're investing it all as a sum, we kind of had to keep some stuff separate, like the C D S, for example. We can't share the interest we get from that anywhere else. And like we said, loans and there is some other stuff like the reserves, so.
Thank you.
That was all I had.
Director Thornborough, any questions, comments? Okay. Public comment?
Just curious, the check on the thirty four two fifty for the L S L, was there one for February?
So we're not, we're not through February. This is only two January thirty first.
Okay, but it was on the February meeting packet also. Which I'll read them. Is she gonna have gone the February financial? Right?
He's on an alphabetical order. Do you have a check on that?
Oh. Two four, two five oh. Because I noticed it was on the last meeting package, but I thought maybe this was for February.
This is the check report. Yeah, so that was actually for a December invoice that we paid in January.
Right.
And that was a high amount because they're working with auditors.
Right.
So they're putting in a lot more hours. But I don't know what you mean by February. We haven't received the February invoice.
Right, that the all these checks are for January. Shouldn't they be for February?
So we're not, I think what, this is only checks through January thirty first.
Okay, but those were included in the February meeting through the end of, they went from January, they used to go meeting to meeting.
Oh, I see what you mean.
See?
Yeah, if you want to put a P R A into that, I can update it.
Okay, well, I was just curious. The, and then on check thirty four three two one for the Costco, is that why, is that different? Why it's not on the U S bank? Is that?
That's our membership.
Okay, so anything you charge is on the U S bank?
We're trying to stop that. We're trying to stop paying things with credit cards because we need them to have vendor accounts that can track.
Right. Okay, so as of now, it's still purchases are still going through the U S bank for Costco.
We don't usually use department credit cards to shop at Costco. It's like you get reimbursed. So someone, it depends on who's going.
No, I, no, I mean.
I I bought some some supplies for the board meeting and some supplies for the office. And and that went on the credit card. So occasionally we will use it, but we're limiting that, yes.
So how are you in the future gonna do office purchases from Costco?
If it's me, I will likely use.
The core credit card. Okay, but if they order it over line online, they probably.
Well, they don't deliver here, so we don't really have that option.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
I use, I, we've been using it to get like water, bulk water and for the meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, next line item, Nicholas.
So I'd just like to, this is a preliminary budget review for the C I P project. I know it's really hard to read this. It's very small. But what what I did was looked at the last year's C I P and extrapolated it through some of the projects were completed unfortunately due. And extrapolated it through some of the projects were completed. Unfortunately, due to the fire, some of the projects were not completed. So um also I've added a section, as was stated in the previous comment, to Director Saunders. Uh we have a few grants that are outstanding that we would like to utilize in our capital improvement plan. So overall, the capital improvement plan will go down. If we do not receive the grants, so what I am proposing for uh next year is approximately one point four five million in capital improvement plan projects. Uh many of the same projects are are that we've always had. So uh to quickly go over them, uh the pump station retrofits, that's uh just a variety of different things that we're going to do. We spent approximately twenty-five thousand dollars last year of a proposed fifty thousand dollar budget. So. As we move forward, those are going to continue to to be the numbers that's ongoing uh. Project to ensure that we're making sure those pump stations are up to date. Uh the tunnel inspection, lining, uh we are trying to still get that done in this fiscal year. However, with the amount of water that we have in the system, it is unlikely. Uh so we are also working with our engineer that we have on uh contract to see if they can provide this as a as a service that we'd be able to pay them directly. So if we do not get it done in this fiscal year, we will schedule it for directly after the irrigation season when we shut the water off. And it will have to go uh approximately October, November of next year. Uh the infrastructure replacement, that is uh updating and doing some uh work on this building here. There's some roof issues that we need to address, and we would like to in- increase the size of the building. So we are looking to hire uh a company to start designing what we would like to see with the building, and this will include the restroom for the public. Uh and then adding in some additional um egress uh uh eighty-eight complacency and and um safety for not only employees but also the public. So the goal is to to get that design work done in this fiscal year and to do the construction in next fiscal year, so approximately seventy-five thousand still to be spent this year. Uh and then rolling over two hundred thousand dollars into next fiscal year. Uh Angel Camp tank recoding, this is something that we've been putting off for a few years, but it's been on the uh the plan to re- be redone this year, so we're gonna work on trying to get that uh addressed. That is a, something that has to be done on a revolving every couple of year basis to ensure that the tanks are safe and are not corroding. The next one down is a treated waterline replacement, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I skipped one, uh repair of the safety walkways. Uh this is a project that we started uh to do this uh winter before the uh before we were basically cut off. Um at some of our uh. Structures where we do diversions, we are going to be building in some walkways with railings so that when our our uh employees are there addressing them, they're in a much more safe condition. So unfortunately, hit the fire, the rains, the snows, everything kind of put all those on hold again. So we're hoping to get those uh constructed this uh this year. A treated water liner replacement, this is going to just be the general replacement of of lines as they go out. We have several areas that we've identified that we'd like to continue to work on, so that's gonna be for approximately fifty thousand dollars of just general treated water line replacements. Uh the PRVs, again, this is something that's a general uh replacement of these PRV valves, it's kind of a, it's a maintenance item, but it's more when we replace this type of a device, it's more than just maintenance, it's a little bit more of a project, and uh so we're wanting to make sure we include all that. The the next one, so annual canal lining, you'll notice that I did not budget in the actual budget, and the reason is because we did receive a grant for this. So if you come down to the grant section, I also have it included in the grant section because we received an eighty thousand dollar grant for this. Um and so I'll go over that when I, when we move down to that grant section. Uh the paving, so we've had a problem with the scope of our paving work. We are trying to update the scope of how we're going to complete that paving. And we are going to be utilizing a uh construction consortium to do that paving, and it's uh kind of goes like we will post on the the job board how much paving we have. And then they will give us a a a price that is going to be from a pre-bid source, so we don't have a paving company that works for us directly as we originally planned. We will have multiple paving companies that are pre-bid through uh these construction consortiums, so they they, this is something that's very industry standard. Uh they will submit their quotes to this construction consortium, and then we were, as a as a member of that consortium, are able to submit the work we need. So that is what we're going to be utilizing uh for the paving work. Uh replace the air release valves, again, much like the PRVs, just a normal kind of a wear item, but much more than just general everyday maintenance, this is something that we like to keep in there. Uh the water station upgrade, so this is something that we identified um last year, and unfortunately, again, we didn't get to do it. We're trying to get the engineering going on this, to have the engineering in this fiscal year, and then the actual work done the next, next fiscal year. Um with the fire and the mitigation efforts, our engineers were working on um. Erosion reports and pipeline reports for how we were going to to combat the the mitigation efforts for the fire, so unfortunately, their time was spent elsewhere. This is something that we're going to have to complete next fiscal year. Uh the next one is the master meters uh. In a previous board meeting, I don't remember if it was last board meeting or the one prior to that, uh we did discuss that the master meters were on back order, and so we are trying to get those, but it doesn't look like we'll be able to get them for five, six months still. Okay, uh the AMI metering infrastructure, so this is also located in two two parts of this capital improvement plan, and I'd like to uh I'll address the first part now, and I'll address the second part later. So we are doing uh a test of this AMI metering infrastructure. Um it is currently being conducted in the uh ALT area. We are testing to see how it is working, putting up the radio towers. We are also going to be doing it throughout the rest of the service area, but we're also going to try to uh capture some grant money to pay for that. There are tons of programs out there right now that are drought-based programs where we can capture in some grant funding to pay for the rest of the AMI infrastructure. Uh the solar on Walton and Sweetwater, and I know this is a, been a little bit of a contentious thing, I I'm still doing a lot of research on this, and we may have missed the window, I know that may not be what everybody would like to hear, unfortunately, due to the changeover. I hate to keep saying it and harping on about the fire and every other thing we were doing. Um and the way that this has changed within the state legislature. Uh we are going to still attempt and and try to figure out if this is a feasible option for us. But as of right now, uh we may or may not have missed the window on putting solar in, and it's it's it's, I'm very sorry that that happened, but we're gonna still do the best we can for that. However, to offset that, we have, we are working with a company who is trying to put together a group, uh a a product that is these water wheels or uh the ditches. And they are going to be putting in a test one as soon as the weather uh calms down. And they're going to be testing it here and helping us write a grant to put in multiple water wheels, so that we can put them throughout the service area, and we capture energy as the water flows through the ditches. So this is something that we would like to uh maybe explore as opposed to the solar, where we can still capture energy and so recoup some of our costs, but it may not be the solar, and we have a different repayment plan, we'd actually be selling the power to PGD as opposed to having some sort of a net metering system. Uh the uh partial flukes, so we're still trying to get those in this year, and so if we do get those in, then we will not include them in the CIP budget moving forward, and those are a measuring device for how much water is flowing through the ditches. Uh the BFD replacement uh for the Sweetwater Treatment Plant. So as was stated, this was something that I would like to keep on the CIP, but I don't have a schedule for it yet. Uh and I'm gonna take any kind of comments after this. This is the, we we put in the valve that will help mitigate some of the need for this, but I still feel it's important at some point to upgrade the controller to this pump, to the VFD pump. Because a VFD is far more efficient, uses less energy, uh it will, it will help work with the valve. So that we'll have double uh uh redundancy on on this, with the way this valve is working. Uh and then coming to the next one here is uh vehicle replacements, so we are noticing several of our uh fleet are uh being worked on more often. We also would like, have identified the need for a larger uh dump truck to be able to pull around some of our equipment. Uh I've been doing some research on uh buying a used piece of equipment as opposed to buying something brand new. So I've been looking at some of the local auction sites and auction houses to see if this is a feasible option, to see how much they cost. To see how many miles they would have, we're utilizing a GSA uh uh vehicle grading sheet to determine if these are going to be a feasible option. Uh as opposed to spending, say, a quarter million dollars on a dump truck, we may be able to get one for around a hundred thousand dollars, and that's just an estimate. Don't quote me on that, but I will bring a full report for what I see at the auction, the next auction local is uh March twenty-first and twenty-second. And so I will, I have uh identified a few pieces of equipment that we would maybe in the future like to purchase, and so I'll bring a full report as to, you know, what the mileage was, what the condition of the vehicle was, how much they sold for. Uh. And then as we move forward, we have this electrification uh requirement that is going to come on us, and that basically means that half of the vehicles we purchase in the future need to be electric vehicles. And 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 the other half can be uh fossil fuel powered, so if we can get in before that requirement happens, then we can actually have, uh we don't have to do the fifty-fifty, we can do uh we can purchase what we need to have for the district. The last one is uh meter replacement, so we originally had this as the loan repayment on the CIP. We are moving it over to our our general budget and debt debt service budget, so that'll be off of the CIP now that it's a completed project. And we will have those loan payment plans within our general budget. Now moving into the grant funding projects, so again, I I stated uh automatic meter infrastructure, so the over and above projects, those are the ones we're going to submit to uh a various grants, granting authorities, so the federal government, the state government, we're gonna try to capture approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete that metering infrastructure for the entire Divide community. Uh the next one, as I stated previous, is we were lucky enough to be awarded a USBR Small Systems Water Grant for eighty thousand dollars. And uh I've identified uh to be able to use this over the next two fiscal years, and so the district would pay approximately sixty thousand dollars. And we would be uh reimbursed, uh sorry, we would pay a hundred thousand dollars, we would reimburse forty thousand dollars for a total out-of-pocket cost of sixty thousand dollars. Where in the past, we've always spent approximately a hundred to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So this is where we're gonna be able to do the same amount of work, not spend as much and uh be able to move forward that way. So there is an area that we've identified that is in the upper country area that we'd like to um uh uh to line, and that will happen over two fiscal years. Uh the next one down is the Cal OES HMPG grant. This is the hazard mitigation grant that we've been pursuing to help us with uh the mitigation, mitigating the fire hazard that happened, the fire damage that happened. So we've identified an area where erosion is prevalent, and we like to put in piping in that area uh. If we are granted this, it would be three million dollars in funding to come into the district from FEMA. We'd be able to pipe over the next three years. It's approximately how, is it two miles, Adam? One and a half miles, two miles, I can't remember.
Uh yeah, it's about, it's about, I think it's almost three.
Almost three miles of the upper canal above the tunnel hill. So we would be able to put in pipe into the ditch. We'd be able to uh mitigate a lot of those erosion hazards, inundation hazards with with the with dirt. Um it would cost the district approximately three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Three, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year to do a one point three million dollars worth of work, so you'd be reimbursed one million dollars every year to to put this pipeline in. Um then the next one is, so we also have out a approximately one point two million dollar grant for a fire grant. This would be to purchase some new equipment. And then this kind of gets back into the the need for a larger dump truck. The uh the equipment that we're purchasing is much heavier than anything we have now, so to be able to transport it throughout the community, we would need an additional uh vehicle to 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 move that around. Um the cost of the equipment would be reimbursed fully, so there is no matching fund for this cowfire grant. And not only would it pay for equipment, it would also pay for a forester to come out and identify areas within our our community. And it would also uh pay for a company to come and do a, basically a one-time clearing of those areas, which then the district would be able to much easier, uh much more uh easily uh keep maintained. So we would have a a great big uh session of them coming in, one year of clearing it, it's approximately a hundred thousand dollars. They would come in, wipe everything out, and then the district would be able to, over the next ten years, be able to maintain those areas. And so that whole cowfire grant, one point two million dollars is no matching funds, it's just money coming into the district to buy the equipment and to hire uh the company. And then the last one is um the ALT two million gallon water tank, so we've identified uh a Senate appropriation for this. We are applying for one point five million dollars to uh to supply this tank. You'll notice that it is in the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. Um this is when it was originally scheduled. We have left it in that timeframe because the uh of the appropriation takes time. There would be a chance to move it forward into the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five timeframe if we receive the appropriation. But that would be something that I would come back to the board after we receive communication back from the Senate, and I'll talk a little bit more about that either now or later. We actually applied with both California senators, so Senator Padilla's office, Senator Feinstein's office, as well as Representative Kylie's office, so we have basically three applications in, so we're hoping that one of them will make the list and we're able to get an appropriation. Now, the way I have done grants in the past is, once we receive a federal grant, you can then take a state grant and you can match it up to that federal grant, and hopefully we can build a tank for free. And I can't guarantee we're gonna be able to do that, but we'll uh pursue approximately the other one point five million dollars from a state grant. There is uh a lot of money in the infrastructure of, um so sorry, uh what is it called, the Inflation Reduction Act? Where the states are getting a lot, lot of money where we can apply to receive the other one point five million dollars for this three million dollar project. And then the last thing, you'll see at North Fork American River Paving Plant, that's just going to remain on there until there is a need for it. This would be the Basio Water. And then the last thing is develop alternative water sources, so we have two uh water sources that are diversions that we have had, that have been damaged from and going all the way back to the King Fire, and we would like to explore uh re uh revitalizing the 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 sorry, I'm having a little bit of a brain fart here. Uh we wanna basically open up those diversions again, we wanna make sure that they're utilized for the district. Uh one is the Otter Creek uh diversion, and then the other one is the Onion Creek diversion, so uh this funding would be to explore uh basically fixing those those diversions and um reassessing the the water that we have access to. And so I'd love to take any questions as the, as it sits. This is, again, it's a district review, so if you have any suggestions or projects or things you do not see on here, or you'd like me to make any adjustments, now would be the time to make the comment.
Nicholas, uh the top graph chart versus the lower one, is that previously?
Nicholas, uh the top graph chart versus the lower one, is that previously?
I included last year's C I P just for reference. So the the top uh spreadsheet, a much smaller one, was what we had originally. Put in the C I P. The bottom one, when we approve this, you'll actually lose the first two columns because that's still this year. So F Y twenty two, twenty three, and then the spent or anticipated columns will fall off. And you'll start it with the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year.
Okay, so notice the public, you know, wanted to.
Sure, I was doing this for full transparency so that the public could see that I didn't change anything from the previous C I P. I only added certain projects and I added the grant section and moved a few things around. So it was just a a reference back.
Thank you, Director Saunders.
Uh we're missing the uh, I know it's changed to Angel Camp tank recoding, but we have um. Tank recording for all the tanks because it's basically a ten year uh cycle, so.
I can remove the angel camp and just call it general tank recoding.
Yep, and then uh let's see, let's do it a bit uh. For the vehicle replacements, uh. I know uh Darrell used to have the sheep with all of the vehicles and the lifespan and all of that, so we can have that.
We will definitely have that for the, for when we approve this budget.
And especially this way, we can look and see which ones we can use for the car. Requirement.
Yes, yes. And then we're also going to identify. Uh if we can rotate some of them into maybe having an add another admin vehicle or something along those lines where we don't necessarily have it on the field, but. We have other options for those vehicles as well.
And then the only thing that's not captured here is we do have the five to ten year uh C I P. Which we can probably add to the potential one because we want to have a document to that. So in case we need a grant to open to go after like doing the hydro plant or the. Okay, diversions and that other stuff. So if we can uh. After that, maybe put that in or. Maybe not potential funded, maybe put it in somewhere else because I mean, some of those projects are ten, twenty million. So. But we want to have it captured so it's reflected if we're going after grants.
So we do have a project list that we've developed and it is a. It I guess would be, some of them are conceptual projects such as the hydro and other projects. And so it would, it's not necessarily part of a C I P, but it would be something that we can include as a project list, a future considerations list.
Mr. Still, a couple of questions, uh comments. Um like you, I've been looking into solar. And uh there's a concept called N M three, which uh really reduces the ability for selling buyback electricity.
Correct.
But if there is a battery backup, then that's another option to look at. So if there's solar panels and we have vehicles parked. Near the solar panels, then we could use that power during the night.
Okay, I will definitely look into that.
Uh the other is that I really appreciate having outlined potential grant funding. Uh as you mentioned, some of these items, we may have to pay sixty percent, others ten percent, another zero percent. So while I can look at what was originally budgeted. I see the potential for savings to go through grants and that really helps us maintain a reasonable grant uh rate. Thank you.
And tied to that, all of our um C I P projects, we'll still try and look for grant funding. So even if it's not in a potential, we will still uh. If there is the ability to get a grant for it, we'll still try and do it.
Ab- absolutely. Yeah, I I identified those as either grants we are currently pursuing or or. Uh projects that I know have readily available grants.
And then uh Director Stone will miss the board meeting when we did have uh the Aqua Preferred uh solar provider. They were here and they went over the. M three point O and the battery and uh the different uh options and um. They're still, even though we won't get the buyback opportunity for electricity, the thing to look at as well is. Is it effective, cost effective with an offset? Because if we're paying straight P G N E for electric. Does the solar give us savings in terms of having solar provide that electricity? Decreasing the amount we use overall. You know, we're not going to get the buyback one as well.
Yeah.
Plus, there's also the other option of we are a public uh utility. So that also may put us in a different uh category.
Yeah, that's and that's where I have to do some more research because I it has been, I've spoken to a few folks about it. And I just have not been able to dedicate as much time as I would have liked to it just because of other fires that we've been having.
That's understandable.
It's a share with the one that. Was twenty two percent and after this year it drops significantly.
It's in April. It actually happened in April.
Director Thornbrough, do you have a comment? Question?
Off mute, there you go. Yes, I do. Um Angel, Angel Camp tank. Um how many more tanks do we have to do? Because it was my understanding that we were caught up on the tanks and we are basically in a. In the cycle to do one every year.
So this was identified in the C I P last year to be done uh this coming fiscal year. So I I think this is part of that re- that uh rotation that you were referring to. I would uh refer to Adam because he might know have a little bit more information on which tanks still need to be recoded if that's okay.
The la- the last one would be Dear Ravine. Um we've done all of them besides that one. We've done all of them besides Dear Ravine.
Dear Ravine would come after Angels Camp?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Adam.
And then we kind of restart the cycle again in a few years.
Okay, that's that's what I want to know. Thanks.
All right, uh point of clarification, the A M I meter infrastructure uh last year's, it was a hundred thousand dollars. Across the board and and now it's, what's, what, where am I missing that?
So I split it. Uh we are already doing some testing in the A L T area. A L T is very open. It's easy to to do radio communication.
Mm hmm.
Uh the rest of the of the district has uh different issues where we're going to. Since we're already doing work there, it's already was budgeted from last year. Uh last year's fiscal uh to last year's C I P. Uh as we move forward, I took what I knew moving forward, we could uh pursue a grant for. So I put that into the bottom section. So if you'll notice, it's still there.
Hmm.
Uh it's just now into two different sections. One is potential grants and one is in the actual C I P, like work we're doing currently.
Mm hmm.
And then the potential to expand is, so originally the hundred thousand dollars was going to get us. Right around like sixty five to seventy percent coverage. The two hundred and fifty thousand should get us about ninety to ninety five percent coverage of the entire of the of the service area. So. To to get that higher coverage, I would like to uh. That's, you know, pursue grants to make sure that we can cover as much of the district as possible.
Okay, thank you. Next question is on vehicle replacement, uh fifty fifty. Is that fifty percent of all vehicles, including uh? Cons- um. Construction or, you know, uh vehicles that are used for uh the highways and byways versus its total?
It is vehicles that are on the road. So equipment is not yet included, but it will be in the future. But for example, if we were to go out and buy four trucks, so we needed four service trucks. Two of those service trucks would have to be electric.
Hmm.
Uh or to say you're buying a heavy duty service truck. And two response trucks would be more like a fifteen hundred style half ton truck. Or an admin vehicle. So the admin vehicle could be electric, the fifteen hundreds could be electric. But you'd have to have whatever the, whatever you plan to purchase, fifty percent of them have to be electric.
Okay, I can get that in there. I mean, right now they're calling it sleep and doesn't. Technically has to be electric, but it has to be zero.
Zero, zero mission. So if you do hydrogen, yeah, we, there are other options. But right now, uh. Right now, it's 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 looking to go for our infrastructure. If you're headed to probably be electric. Now there are uh carve outs, there are caveats um because of where we're located. You know, electric, the grid is not always uh as reliable, it should be reliable. So there are a little bit. Caveats, carve outs, and and if we can get a few things perfect before this takes effect, then we are. Uh ahead of the game in that respect, where we don't necessarily go to electric right away.
And one more, one more comment.
Uh just to top out to that for the public. So it's. Uh most of the northern and mountain counties are trying to work on this because, one, we know. We look at the snow and the cold, the temperature for us to work as well for um electric batteries. We already have problem and strain on the grid. So now switching to electric, that's another issue. And uh the same thing as well. How are you going to be able to um when it's switching to construction? How do you remove the snow if you don't have a vehicle that's powerful enough? So all of these issues are. We're doing our best in our area working with like mountain counties and uh R W A and other ones.
Thank you. And finally, uh the nomenclature for the A L T two million gallon water tank, what's the actual?
I will change that. I, that's an oversight of myself and I very much apologize for that. That should say Sweetwater.
Community.
No, it should say Sweetwater Water Treatment Plant.
Yeah, and that's clarified after the public, so it's.
That was a holdover from the previous C I P budget. That project has since been renamed and I will apologize for that.
Okay, Larry, you have the floor.
Uh question, uh what? Logical electricity and especially uh for water. With the healer, it is electricity. So what's the hurdle rates for both of those?
Hurdle rates?
Yeah, I'm not, not to say I'm as familiar with that. I'm sorry.
Yep, so, uh return on investment. Oh, uh.
ROI.
Sorry, uh the project, there are approximately twenty thousand dollars per wheel. They lift in and out of the canal and the return on investment is anywhere between uh three to seven years.
Okay, does that include repair and maintenance?
It's a, it's a, it's a like a contract where we own the wheels, but then they may pay that.
Okay, so that's included in there on the cost?
Correct. Yeah, and so. Uh we are also going to pursue some of the greenhouse gas grants that are available for them. So that would even reduce the return on investment would even be. What about on your electric side, your solar? I've never seen that pay off. Uh yeah, I I did a lot of research about the solar. That's that's, I I put solar in my house and that. I I I'm bad about that.
Director Saunders.
Pet your trees down. Yeah, we're never gonna get like a good return on investment on solar, but it's more about having that diversified portfolio. You know, you get a big blizzard and snow, we have no electric a lot of times. So it's be able to have different places we can.
All I'm saying is make sure you have all the, all the costs, repair and replacement costs and stuff like that. Because when you work with federal government and their programs. It's a twenty five year payback.
Oh, yeah.
This gets down to replacement costs also.
And if we're lucky, there are companies that will. Give us the solar and everything and just have sort of different paybacks. And there are, there are opportunities.
And then the other part is is they're changing on how you can sell electricity back. It's not necessarily at end user rates. It's like you guys are doing. You have a cost of infrastructure and the cost of the water, same as electricity. They're they're gonna break it up. So your paybacks are gonna go way down.
Hmm, hmm, yeah. Okay, thank you. Director Thornbrough, you have something?
Yeah, I do. On the uh the fifty percent of the vehicles, um you know, like, like uh Director Saunders was pointing out, when we get the snow and stuff. We're buying four wheel drive vehicles. And we're looking at, you know, three quarter ton of one ton trucks. I mean, are those even available?
So they, they are available, um and that is definitely something that is um. An issue that many people are are raising. So they are available. However, um. The state of California has identified that this is something that they're gonna pursue pretty heavily. So we have to either get a caveat carved out or 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 comply.
Thank you, Director Thornbrough. Cherie.
I believe April fifteenth is the change on the solar.
You're probably right, yeah. It is sometime in April.
Um but one thing is that that. Whatever that is, was not included in the packet.
Whatever was.
Up there on your, your presenting.
Are you looking at?
On the left side.
Agenda.
It's just the agenda.
Oh, okay. So all we got in the packet was the spread piece.
What do you, I don't know what you're referring to.
For your C I T present portion.
You have to be more clear because all, all, all of us submitted was this.
All right.
Yeah, sorry.
I thought that was your.
Oh, no, that's just the agenda. It's my agenda. It's uh it's a tab.
Yeah, I can't see from the thing.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Dowden.
Yes, uh I'd like your idea about pursuing additional water coming into the district, the Otter Creek and uh. Onion Creek, Onion Creek would go into Stumpy Meadow.
Both of them, yeah.
Oh, both of them, okay. Yeah, that's a great one. That that should be really good too. And then the one down there at the North Fork uh Conference. We already have a building down there. I.
We don't.
Anybody seen it?
We don't have.
It's supposed to be there. We were told it's there. And classic uh Water District is using it. They've got a pump in it and they've already left us a section in there to put up on there.
And unfortunately, the district hasn't paid for any of of their responsibilities. So. That's correct.
Oh.
So it's built, it's there, uh there's a spot that's now being used. By P C W A, but there's still a pipe that's there for us to access. But when this was originally constructed, uh the district did not pay their share to utilize this. Um and as it sits right now, we don't have anywhere to put that water. But we are exploring uh options to. In lieu of use that water, so move that. Not use the water there, but use the water somewhere else and then sort of trade.
Yeah, because that two million gallon tank, you're thinking about putting in sweet water, the additional tank. Would that go good down there if uh in cool further down the road?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that would circumvent much of our water to put in, would not be utilized there. It has to be kind of where we're gonna put it because. It it's gonna be. The the valve that we put in, the pump that we put in, it's going to help the whole system's way to be able to increase our water supply reliability.
And the thing about the dump truck, um even that bigger dump truck, have you thought about renting from like a local guy or something? Somebody like Matt Liddicoe or something. He's got a dump truck. Other than that, if you buy one, they're gonna be, it's like a five year moratorium, isn't it? They're good in five years. Then you gotta replace him every ten years, something like that.
So that's what we're, we're looking at newer, newer models.
Because you had an older one, they're gonna make you.
Well, we, we have that from nineteen ninety three, so.
They just fixed that, huh? You just fix that up to here.
Believe you have a.
Oh, yes, um. This, oh, Director Thornbrough, then I'll get to you, Karen.
Yeah, the, the, the two million gallon tank, this is all my understanding because I was kind of pushing for that some time ago. Was that when they put in the Sweetwater Treatment Plant, um they didn't put in enough storage at the facility. And it was like the day after Mitch and I were sworn in, we had an emergency because the plant went down. And we were using so much water that that tank was was gonna be, was gonna empty. It in in a matter of a couple of days if that problem wasn't solved right away. So the, the intent of having a bigger storage tank was that. Uh so that if the plant does go down, then we're we're covered better. And it also has, has to do with, you know, for example, if the plant goes down and there's a fire, then it needs fire hydrants. So it's, it's, it's intent. Is to increase the amount of storage at the facility. Um I was also told some time ago that it was originally planned to be. You know, that much storage, but then somebody made some cuts to bring the price of putting the plant in down. And so that, that was downsized. So that's the information that I received some time ago.
The the official project right now is called the Georgetown Divide Public Utility District. Sweetwater Water Treatment Plant Tank for Water Supply Reliability and Fire Flow Requirements.
I don't have that acronym on my.
Yeah, you're gonna work on that acronym.
You need an acronym for the acronym.
Yeah, that is uh, it's so it's, it's got to work correctly. It's water supply. It is fire flows. It's in case the plant goes down, we still have water in the system that we could utilize to to base the power. Fire hydrants to power uh homes to make sure that they don't go without water.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was very surprised to learn at the time. This was going on that we only had a couple of days and we did an emergency conservation request to all the residents. And I mean, it was, I I was shocked that we were in a, in that situation. So I, to me, that needs to be a priority.
Thank you, Director Thornbrough.
It was eight hours. We're passing.
Okay, uh Ms. Brantall, you have the floor.
Hi, uh I was just wondering, did I hear you correctly when you said that they were, that the state was gonna mandate? Uh three quarter ton and half ton trucks to be electric? Uh because I thought at the last meeting, it was only gonna be half ton trucks.
So it's, it doesn't matter if you, if you were to buy five. Half, five, three quarter ton trucks, half of them need to be electric. So it doesn't matter what you bought. It's just a fifty percent.
Okay, I didn't have them. Um so when we have a problem with the snow and all of that, where are they gonna be? Are we gonna have enough power to get up the hills and where we need to go with them?
And I would say that that's one of the questions that we're asking the same, we're asking the same questions of, of the state. So. I wish I had a better answer for you. Uh it's something that is still uh. Happening, it's still fluid right now, I guess would be the good term. So. So I, I, I don't have a better answer for you, but we're on it. We're trying to figure it out.
I think the state should uh, make some exceptions for people that live in the high country for sure.
I think the state should.
And just wanna clarify, it's the requirements per vehicle, not for allocation of assets.
Uh, so we don't need to take up, we don't need to replace like fifty percent of our vehicles now. It's, it's only for future purchases. And so there are some options for three-quarter and one-ton vehicles that are battery powered, um. That, that is an option, but it's anything moving forward. So I think twenty twenty-five is when this starts. So anything we purchased before then does not really count, but moving into twenty twenty-five. Uh, if you buy more than one vehicle a year, then you have to have, one of them has to be electric or zero emission. So you can circumvent if I buy one, is that you can't have half of a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
But if you buy two, then you have to have fifty percent of them have to be electric or some sort of zero, zero emission.
Yeah, what were those vehicles you called that actually move? What, what do you call it? Uh, not. Transportation or service vehicles, you call them what? You know, bulldozer, uh, what do you call it? Have you, so it doesn't have to be, you spent two hundred thousand dollars on heavy equipment?
As of right now, that is not included, but it, it will likely be included in the future.
Okay, thank you. May, did you have a question?
When I was driving here, I had a thought about, um, something I really appreciated about the water. And that's when I first moved here and I was getting my insurance on my house. One of the questions is, where is the nearest water hydrant? Well, I hadn't paid attention, but I walked out. I, I live on Gowing Park Drive. And just very close to me is one of those, well, um, whatever you call those.
Fire hydrants.
Hydrants, yes, okay. Well, later on, I was with some friends, not necessarily living on my road. They were trying to get fire insurance at some, and there was a lot of, not necessarily right here, but I live, that's the woods, you know? They were just down on their knees begging to get insurance and I felt so appreciative that the water department, they put that there. And made it possible for me to just get my fire insurance so, um, easily. And I've had it ever since with them. They're from Texas, so they haven't come up here to look and see, but. Anything about it, but I've never had any trouble with fire insurance, so I really do appreciate the water department.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. Appreciate that. We'll move forward now to informational items. Board reports, I'd like to start with Director Stowall.
Nothing to refer.
Director Thornborough.
Well, we had the, uh, El Dorado. Water Agency meeting last week for the second month in a row. And I was real surprised to learn that the El Dorado Water Agency actually is required to be involved in stormwater drainage. For pretty much everyone in the county. Um, and I asked that, what's that got to do with, you know, like treated water and stuff? And it was in the charter, I guess from nineteen fifty, went fifty-seven, I think. And so the reason this came up was because they wanted to do a, uh, study, hire an engineering firm to do a study. At a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, I think it was, to look at Cameron Park's drainage problems. Apparently, they have a whole bunch of drainage problems. Yeah, and so it's gonna be a cost share. Uh, deal with Cameron Park for, to deal with their stormwater drainage. So that was. That just for me, that, that we had to spend that kind of money to take care of stormwater drainage for everyone in the county. So anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Director Thornborough. Director Saunders.
Yep, I have a board report in and it is, uh, located after the, uh.
Yeah.
C I P's, yeah, we can see there's one in there. I'm not gonna go through this whole thing, I won't do the highlights. So, uh, the California Natural Resource Agency, that's all of the secretaries from the state that deal with water. And there they push really of, um, high precipitation events. So that's the thing that they're looking at and regulations that may come from that. One of the big issues is, uh, they realized that normally what drives sixty percent of California water is the April snowpack. And that's no longer relevant, because the peak is now sometime between January, February, March, and by April, that snowpack is down. So the challenges moving forward are to find ways to capture the stormwater or to, um, be able to have water last November. So that's one of the main things from there. Um, the other thing that happened is, um. We've been attending the M C, uh, Mountain County, uh, Regional Water Agency, Aqua. We've been leading with the State Water Control Board, so we have been going over some of the water use of property, too, that we've been dealing with. One of the ones we keep bringing up is, uh. Ways to get the water infrastructure for fire mitigation and fire suppression kind of counted in our, our water budget. So, uh, the State Water Resource Control Board said they are actually looking at that and trying to put that into, um, the water budgets for us. And we're also trying to work on getting that language put into bond makers, cause if you just put infrastructure or aging infrastructure. Then we're competing with L A, San Francisco, for those kind of brands. If we make it specific for wildfire mitigation and suppression, now we're just dealing with the areas that, you know, we can all file all the time. To give us a better chance to get. Um, let's see, what was the other thing, um? Last go, um, we're working on the budget and, uh. The agency contribution is gonna go up, but it won't go up more than eight, eight percent. I think right now we're on five thousand, so it shouldn't be more than about eight percent of that. That's all I have for the point.
Thank you, Director Saunders. Director Seaman.
Um, we've had, uh, irrigation committee, um, last month. And we've been on the policy committee every two weeks. Um, with Mr. Director Saunders and myself, and we'll have more information on that, um, third report in the packet.
Thank you, Vice President Seaman. Okay, um. I received my certification of completion for the California Special District's Ethics A B one, two, three, four compliance training. And I will be attending the A L T Community Town Hall with Nicholas, Adam and Alexis on Thursday evening, the sixteenth, this week. We'll be introducing the newest new G M and emphasizing Jeephead's commitment to this customer service and our mission statement. We'll be speaking to the community and encourage, uh, involvement and participation on our different committees and. Coming to the meetings to voice their opinions or concerns or comments. And then Nicholas will give a slide presentation, uh. As the centerpiece of the, uh, uh, forum. And then we'll also have a time, will it be, uh, Q and A? For the public, respond to their questions, and they're eagerly looking forward to, uh, the meet and greet. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Where is this located at?
In, in, in Auburn Lake Trails. I, they, they said they wouldn't mind having, uh, uh, people from outside the community to come. Unlike last time where it was very strict guidelines, but if, if that's something that you'd like to attend, I could grease the skids and. Uh, allow them, you could come into the gate and turn it right, wherever it is. Uh, Director Saunders.
Yeah, I do have a rotating town hall, so the next time I have one, usually have one at the I O L, all there in Georgetown. Will do one in Garden Valley and one in Coola, so there will be some rotating ones as well.
Mm-hmm, and I'd be happy to give the same presentation at those meetings as well.
And, and they wouldn't mind hearing district-wide what's going on. It doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Like, like last time.
Much of what's gonna be presented is, uh, kind of a, how your water gets to your houses. Uh, by effect from the fires, just a general history of the district. So, uh, and then we're also gonna give an update on the W E R, which is the permitting process for the A L T region.
Mm-hmm. They'll give you an opportunity to, to say that you're out there in the community outreach and all that good stuff.
Yeah, so you're saying, you're saying this is more of a general town hall type thing and not a just A L T specific one?
Yes, sir, they, uh, they expressed it'd be A L T specific last time. But there's a new, uh, president there who's expanding the boundaries as far as, uh, who might be able to attend and the scope of the. Conversation at the meeting.
Who goes to him?
Cherie.
Do you think that you could send out an email to the email list and then pop to the gate and allow people to come in? If they say they're going, that's what they used to do.
Yeah, I'll have to verify there's enough, um, capacity.
Well, that's true. Well, you're not gonna get that.
What's that?
You're not gonna get that many people.
Yeah, last time we hit, when we were there with introducing the new G M, uh, a year ago, there was. Huh?
The other new.
The other, yeah, the, the oldest new G M.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, it was about forty people, thirty-five or forty.
How many people?
It, it's a different, oh, this time it's the same, but, um, I remember, uh, probably fifty. Ish, yeah, um.
I, I'd be happy to, to do some open town halls. I would like to be the community and I plan to, uh. I've already made some arrangements with like the fire board, to speak at the fire board and I would like to speak at the Garden Valley Fire Board. So I, I'd like to get out and be a little bit more senior on the community. So if there's any options or any places. But that would be a good spot for me. I'd be more than happy to take that to us.
And they'll be.
Have a meet their new fire dog.
I'd love to meet, I love fire dogs.
Since, since there's a lady responsible for setting this up, there'll be cookies this time, so there might be a few more people. Yeah, okay, cookies and stuff like that. Okay, next, uh. Looks like we're ready for a legislative liaison report.
So I have a table with, uh, most of the, uh, bills that we'll be looking for to support or oppose. We actually have the agenda items, so I'll go over most of those again. I did meet with, um, Senator Gill and we, uh, she did sign on to one of the letters of support for our grants. And, uh, we're also looking to meet with, uh, Senator Gill and hopefully with Senator Patterson at the legislative days, which is coming up.
And if I just add, we were, we're going to likely host, uh, Senator Arroto Gill here at the district office. Uh, as was stated, she did sign a letter of support for the, the Sweetwater, uh, tank project. And, uh, we would like to give her a tour of that facility so that she is aware of what she's supporting. As well as whatever else she has time for in the district.
Thank you, Director Saunders. Uh, we're ready for the general manners report?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, I'm not gonna, again, as was stated, this is in, uh, the board packet. So you can, uh, see week over week generally what I'm doing. Uh, I would like to just point out a few things, uh, and I would, uh, just thank, uh, Ms. Carlyon. For, uh, uh, the suggestion of where I am meeting and how I'm meeting. So that I did add that to the, uh, general manager report, whether it is an in-person meeting or a virtual meeting. So you are able to follow along whether or not I'm in the office or not. Um. Uh, I would just say, the week of the twelve through the eighteenth was probably, uh, one of my most eventful weeks here at the district. Save for, uh, coming up to a fire. This was, uh, trying to get, uh, our grant. Submitted for the H M G P program, uh. As of Monday, we were eligible to submit the grant. As of Thursday, when we had a Friday deadline, we were not eligible to submit the grant. Because of a, uh, not being part of the local hazard mitigation plan. Uh, I pulled every string that I could possibly think to pull, uh, with the county. And I bet at the eleventh hour, uh, the county agreed to submit the grant on our behalf. And, uh, that was, uh, like I said, an all-day process and I'm pretty sure my family wanted to pick my cell phone and throw it in the lake. Um, did attend a Rotary Club meeting and presented the same presentation to the Rotary Club the next week. So it will be something that I'd like to keep moving throughout the community. Uh, uh, I was previously saying, was able to get the application in for the Senate appropriation. Uh. Uh, do a couple of good news updates that I'd like to go over. So Senate appropriation for one point five billion. We were able to get the H G M P grant submitted. Uh, that was for three million dollars in grant money, nine hundred thousand dollars in district matching funds. Uh, and then last but not least, the district, we didn't even know, uh, we were, uh, nominated for the distinguished community organization award. Uh, that's given out by the El Dorado School Board Association. So that was, uh, given by, uh, you were nominated by the local Black Oak Mine School District. And, uh, we were selected to, uh, to win that award. So we will be accepting that award. I believe it's March twenty-seventh. Uh, so super exciting, uh, very excited to go out. President McDonald and myself will be attending the award ceremony, so we'll make sure we bring pictures back.
Who's that?
Obama.
The, no, it's at the Country Club in Placerville, uh, uh. What is it, what is it, uh? I'm having a brain freeze, it's, it's, it's on here. No, I think I wrote it down. Oh, it's at the, some. If you ask me after, I will be happy to tell you. Still have it off my head, I don't. No. Oh, thanks. This, that's a, it's all countries, the country club.
Oh, Cold Springs.
Cold Springs, there you go, thank you so much. Sorry, I, I was, uh, sorry, it's cold springs. Uh, there'll be, I tell you, a few meetings coming up. Uh, there's a bunch of work on the American River watershed that we're working on. And so this is program, programming for the projects that we have, that's been stated. So they're, uh, putting us in the project list, um. As was stated by Director McDonald, I'll be, uh, Auburn Lake Trails on the sixteenth. Uh, we attended the Legislative Symposium in person in Sacramento on the twenty-third. Uh, and also the Legislative Committee Meeting on the twenty-fourth, and again, on the twenty-seventh to receive the award. So I'd be more than happy to take any questions, but that is my report.
Great. I looked, I didn't see any. Thanks, so.
So what is H G M P?
Hazard, it's, it's actually H M G P. I apologize for the, since I, I have had such a hard time with it. It's the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program from FEMA. I, I, I have it, I have it wrong, I apologize. So, yeah, it's, it's actually, I've written it down about eighteen hundred times and I think I've written it probably like twice.
Okay. Okay, I want to thank you for doing this this way and putting it in the bill.
Okay.
When I originally suggested this three years ago, they made this glossy thing. It didn't go in the bill. It was in between. So all the extra postage.
Yep.
It's not glossy, I mean, and it's less dense. You're welcome.
I very much thank you for your comment. That means a lot. That doesn't mean a lot.
Well.
They're not being facetious, they're.
No, he's serious, he's serious.
Water District's, um, email thing, and it's short and sweet. It's a newsletter that they send out. I did some research three, three years ago.
Yes.
And perfect that you could also send down with that product.
Yes, so, uh, I'll just, I guess, break the ice, uh. I apologize for not doing this sooner, but, uh, we'd like to welcome Elizabeth Olson, our new executive assistant. She's been doing a really great job bringing up the feed. I'm sure, I'm sure she's going to hate me pretty soon after all the work that I gave her. But she's also going to be, uh, working on some of our social media stuff.
Okay.
So she is starting like a Twitter for the district, so we can send out notifications. We have our Facebook. So we are, we are looking at those type of electronic avenues as well, so we will be doing that. So thank you again for that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's a lot of people on Facebook.
Yeah, and also.
And they don't read these things in the bills most of the time.
And, and also something we thought about for you is we are looking at, um, when we are done with the meeting, is putting them on YouTube. So they're accessible and much more easily to download as of the.
Oh, good.
So.
Add on that, once we get on. Stuff fiber or cable or whatever.
We're not talking about internet today.
YouTube and stuff works.
We're not talking about internet today.
That with the, the meeting packets and the M P four and the M P three. Need to, maybe when she gets spare time, she can go through and look and there's meeting minutes missing from like two twenty-twenty. And, and there's, you know, I mean, that's time that there's spare time.
One of her goals is to be organized and throw everything together. Don't give us, give us, give us some time.
So is there a reason why the, um, audios don't go on right after the meeting or within a few days?
Alright.
Okay.
Right, it takes four hours for them to download.
But the M P threes, no. They're, they're not as dense. They're, they're not as dense.
So that's one of the reasons. We're trying to kind of with other avenues so that we don't have that much time sink into that. And then we're, we're, we're trying to get there, so give us, she's full-time now, so basically that was a part-time person who was doing it beforehand, so now she's here all the time. Uh, and so we should have more time to address those issues.
Moving on to the operations manager's report.
I'll just turn it straight over to Adam Brown for this.
Uh, yeah, so first page that basically, you know, the stuff is continuous spill, we have had a lot of uh. Obviously various rain and snow events, so it's been entertaining last, last couple of months and last, beginning of this month too. Our treatment, uh, little odd, we had a little more production while, and I think it's probably due to some breaks, some freezing temperatures and whatnot, kinda picked up our average there. We did have a large break beginning of the month, so we saw increase in production from Walton. Um, but no, no out, no samples outside our drinking, drinking, drinking water standards, um, so we're good there. The second page, the quick breakdown, I've been talking uh, more and more about our use of Cartograph. I was sort of starting to try to provide a little more information, so I was trying to explain the tape a little bit, so we typically have an activity. Um, that our operators do, and that's associated with some kind of asset in the field. So broke it, broke it down by activity at apartment, how many times we're doing that and the labor and the total costs associated with that. Um, total cost, you know, it's time, material, equipment, um, that goes in each one of those, those activities. Um, and the request breaks down, um, what comes in from customers out to field staff. Still a hundred percent there yet, we're still, you know, we didn't capture everything, it's still like a learning process, there, there's, there's a lot, you know, we need to really start looking every single day in everything we do. So keep getting refined and refined as we, as we move forward. Uh, there's a couple of pictures, it should say too, with every activity, you know, they're, they're documenting everything, pictures, notes, so we can always go back to those assets and look. Here's a couple of pictures we have of before and after some work, um, that was done in different, different areas. I move for the CIP program. Paving, same story there, um, working on, we'll have that complete once we get the wireline replaced. Cartograph will finish enough the access to the treatment plants, so that should be done here, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Water main replacement, chimney plant, we have those supplies here, we're kind of looking for clear weather to, to get that project done. The condition assessment, water reliability, our engineer Jack Scruggs is here, he'll get us up here in a minute on, on that study. On the AMR project, um, sounds like they finished the survey um, just last week. So we're finishing that out, we got a date to receive an email actually today about our meter recycling, it's like. Um, it's around thirty-six thousand dollars we'll be getting back from recycled meters. So we should see in that, hopefully in the next couple, couple of weeks. On the annual canal line, we were, we were gearing up for that, and then we, these, these snowstorms hit, um, so we kinda, we're just kinda letting, because it was starting to dry out. So I go, we're gonna start getting, working on it, um, but. Probably looking more toward the middle of April, I would think now, by the time we get some clear weather and some dry weather. Uh, Nick picks on a couple of these too, the AMI infrastructure, um, what kind of the cost there, safety walkways, just kind of access. Pump station, we are gonna do, you know, spend some money there doing some retrofit of some, you know, pressure tanks, um. Some other, other kind of things, kind of, kind of smaller stuff, but we'll be doing that this year. Um, so wait on the delivery of the valves we covered a couple of months ago, so once those get here, we'll, we'll get those installed at uh, the Stewwater. A few other activities, um, just some day-to-day stuff between, you know, different grant programs. They were, we were applying for Cartograph setup, general customer service and just general day-to-day operations. Uh, last page is our monthly water demand assessment. As you can see, we dropped quite a bit um, for January third, which is pretty normal, but we are really low. I don't, you know, I don't really have a good explanation for why we're so low, so. Um, I think a lot, so some of it has to do with our population per household calculation change, I think that's maybe why. It drew it down a little bit. But, yeah, so that's, it kinda shows you, that's kinda like, basically residential use is kinda what the state requirement is right now. So, for indoor usage, you know, once we account for the outdoor, you know, we can, I think we're, we're getting pretty close, you know, some, some times of the year, so. And then I can take any questions and then um, Jack can do his presentation on the water, water reliability study.
Before we get, and then I just like to add one little um, caveat. We're going to be adding in a section, and it's gonna actually be Alexis moving forward, but it's kind of a forecasting outlook on. Water use and water availability through the year. And that will probably help, you know, the water, the treated water side, but also the raw water side, so we're gonna start looking at. Uh, you know, the weather and how much rain we're getting, how much snow we're getting. So that we can understand it, and you know, as the public states, we have all this water in the system right now, why can't we use it? So we wanna know when we have all that water in the system and it wasn't available to us, so just wanna make the board aware that that's gonna be something, something we had in the future.
We were supposed to get, that was forecasted for November, February, I forgot the three months we did, because it's. Actually part of the water shortage contingency plan, we're sup, we're supposed to remember that, I would word it as well instead of. I guess I'll divide that back, um. You get to pick between Robert and me, because we've been patting our hands.
Well, it's you been.
Good question, I know in the past you had talked about the water savings. The district had saved as a result of the canal lining, and if I recall, it was eight hundred. Yeah, acre feet a year, is that currently accurate for all the lining? Have been year-to-date.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's pretty good, I mean, it's, it's a. It's a hard number to capture, because you had to be as between um, the gauges throughout the system. Yeah, it's kind of a ruse with some gauges, or I was estimating sixty-eight hundred.
Director Saunders.
The board president. Um, which uh, which line represents the um, requirement for where we're supposed to be in terms of uh. As a district, so like the one hundred sixty-seven gallons per day, which uh, represents that area. Would that be under our gross water use?
I'm not, I'm not sure where, where you, where you.
So you know, uh, annually, we're allowed to average one hundred sixty-seven hours per day, based on that uh, the SBX seven.
Yeah, the residential. So that is actually, that's an annual number.
So it wouldn't be reflected here.
But not, it's not reflected here, no, but I can tell you that we were under it for two thousand twenty-two. Can't remember the number, but we were under it.
It is gross, so it's not residential.
And uh, we're close now with the fifty and fifty-six, but as you look at the uh, summer months, we go up significantly, so we gotta. Keep pushing that uh, con, con.
But you also have to remember that that does not include outdoor water that, the, the summer.
Yes.
So yeah, once we figure all that out, um, we'll have a different number that is required.
Can you clarify that?
Um, so what he's stating is the fifty and the fifty-six, that's the uh, stated uh, requirement from eleven, uh, SP eleven fifty-seven. Uh, to reduce to below fifty and under forty-seven, under forty-two gallons per person indoor water use. So that's not, it has nothing to do with how much water a customer actually using inside. Is an extrapolated number based on how many connections we had and how much population we have. But what's noticed is, people will say, well, there's no chance of us getting this residential number of, say, in July of one ninety-three. Down to fifty-five, and that's not what's being asked. So I wanted to clarify that this number of one ninety-three, the fifty-five, forty-seven and forty-two do not include. Water that's used outside the home, so that's a different calculation that we are working on with state board. Uh, the fifty-five is only a number that is a. It's a target for indoor water use, and it's not a hard target, it's something that is. Uh, nobody's getting fined for not, for using more than fifty-five gallons in a day, nobody's getting fined if they take a bath or a shower. This district has to ensure that all of the water users keep it to a certain level. Based on whatever the outdoor use is, the indoor use, the commercial water use, and the water leaks. So we have a discretion as to how we would like to conserve water, but we still need to conserve water.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd, if you could let, yeah, Mr. Dowd, no, no, if you could let Larry know. He left three minutes too soon, about. You know, it's not gonna be looking specifically at him, it's cumulative management of the whole district. No, please, yeah, yeah, Director Seaman.
Um, one I was wanting to know, uh, you have door hangers? Three of them at a hundred and thirty-seven dollars, does that include something else besides the door hanger?
It's timing.
Okay, okay, and then, have you looked at, you know, last year's Stevagatton month? Uh, where people were sort of not using water and not using much of anything, and in relation to these drought numbers. You know, where we're in the negative percentage of usage. Uh, I was just.
That's a percent change, um.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, so whatever, I don't remember when we had it. Okay, so that would be December, so.
You could look at December twenty-one there, which would have been sixty.
Yeah, I was just trying to come up with, you know, if everybody sort of either moved out or.
Didn't have water.
Or didn't have water, or couldn't use water, or why would you want to? Maybe that's why some of these negative numbers might be there in this time of the year. I don't know, just a guess.
Well, the, well, the negative numbers, the percent change.
Right, right, do I understand that, but that's why I was wondering if, if maybe last year's to the year before. I don't know.
Remember starting in March and.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to really narrow down why exactly, you know, each. Each time, you know, it changes.
Possibly, this could possibly be used for residential water treating their gardens that need to be watered.
Yeah, and probably, and like, a lot of this probably issue was from the drought restrictions, and we were constantly, you know, being the public, that's probably a lot of the reason why we saw. Production this year.
Thank you, and we have, uh, Shree.
Um, just to call it down to AMI, um, several years ago, when they were brought out their electronic meters. I went and searched other districts that did it, and I went into like newspapers and people went ballistic. When they, they were mostly in the cities, they would put these towers in the alleyways. And they went ballistic thinking the radiation, so you might, I don't know what the amount of radiation. Or whatever from that to the homes versus the meters to the vehicle, I don't know.
So there, there isn't a difference, because a meter's always transmitting regardless, so it's, it's, it's a radio.
And that's less than a, like a cell phone.
It's a radio.
So you might want to pre-tell people in A, uh, ALT that these are.
We got a tank too, so they're not gonna see it, but we could, we could.
Um, in the neighborhoods.
Like high infrastructures.
The big area, okay, well, this in the city was.
One of the issues we have here is the trees. Cause problems, so, but all of them will be strategically located within our infrastructure, or we'll put a tower up. You won't see it, I'll be like, that's just something faster.
It's just something you could, you know, tell them ahead of time.
Measured in micro or milliwatts versus kilowatts.
And that was one of the things, it during the uh, town halls, I did bring that up. Uh, now I granted it, what, three, four years ago, and you probably forgot since then, but. It was brought up at the time about how much those things would be given off, if there was anything they were giving off. So they wouldn't be breaking about it.
I think we're gonna invite, uh.
Yeah, but he's doing his thing.
Yeah, yeah, you can come on up and, this is Mr. Scruggs, he's with Castle. Yeah, the quick presentation. So as I've updated the last three for me, and we've been working on this project, and you know, it's been, we started with raw our canals. Um, pump station.
We got on there on. Forty-two again, is there a way to share that up to this uh, on the Zoom so we can all see that?
We're, we're out doing it right now.
So, um, in two thousand and two. Castle also was under contract to do the condition assessment of your, of your facilities, and so. Hopefully it serves as a benefit to the district, and now twenty years later, we can come back. Uh, evaluate, uh, what has been done, what hasn't been done. Uh, because in two thousand and two, we did a very detailed mapping of your ditch system. Identified priority repair areas at that time. We also did a detailed mapping of your um, of your water distribution system. And we prepared a hydraulic network analysis from that, so. Uh, it, it has been insightful for me, and I hope for, it'll help the, the value of the report. Now, twenty years later, to go back and revisit these areas that we. We visited and assessed back in two thousand and two. So there was a comment made with regards to uh, reductions in um, in water demands. So um, in that two thousand and two assessment, we identified a number of priority repair areas for the ditch. And uh, it is impressive to me that as we went through the areas upstream of the water treatment plants. That um, all or virtually all of the areas that we identified as being priority repairs have in fact been repaired. So um, I don't have an annual comparison of what it was in two thousand and two versus two thousand and twenty-two. But uh, in two thousand and two, the design flow from um, from um, Butter Creek diversion. And through your up-country uh, ditch system, the, the design flow was thirty-five cubic feet per second. That's the design flow needed during summer months in order to meet irrigation demands of peak. Uh, maximum data mans during uh, the warmer states of the, uh, summer. So thirty-five cubic feet per second is how we evaluated the system, and then of course, the demands reduced as we went through. In two thousand and twenty-two, uh, we received from Adam the uh, peak demand or the peak flow through. Uh, the up-country system, and it was twenty-eight and a half CFS. So that's about a twenty-five percent reduction. Now, that is significant, of course, uh, some of it certainly can be attributed to, as I understand, there have been some reductions. Over twenty years as far as what your irrigation demands have been. But there have been a lot of those reductions, the main team, uh, staff that we were. Uh, pleased to accompany us uh, on our assessments, that having to do with uh, with the, the, the loss reduction. And we certainly saw it as we went through, that there was significant improvements done to your ditch system. So, um, um, again, we, we work with a lot of water districts. Uh, a lot of suburban districts, a lot of urban, a lot of rural districts, and I will tell you, and again, not to. Uh, you know, feather my, my presentation here, but we're greatly impressed by your management staff, that they are able to, to sustain and maintain. This system, it's not an easy system to operate and maintain. You know, you realize this, but just to give you an example, I think you have about thirty-five hundred services, something on, on, on that order. We do work for Orange Vale, Citrus Heights, uh, Fair Oaks, Sax Suburban, all those districts have on the order of. Twelve to fifteen thousand service connections in areas that are miniscule compared to geographic areas that you cover. So, uh, I, I applaud you for, for the amount of limited resources that, limited connections that you have. And the extensive amount of, of, of facilities that you have, that you're able to maintain and, and sustain them as well as you are. Now, we also do a lot of uh, work for other rural districts like yourselves, Calgary, Calgary Public Utilities. Water Water Agency covers County Water District. And your operations is certainly uh, as, as good or better than, than any of those uh, those districts. So with that, you can kind of get a roll here, I'm trying to be as brief as possible. I tend to have this habit of providing too much information, so if I see you start nodding off, so I'll try to skip you. So this is a bit of an overview of uh, of our scope. So up in the upper left-hand corner, we have a typical boost to pump station, that's their one of five of, of those. Of, of those in your system, they're very similar in design, that happens to be Chipmunk Trail Booster Pump Station. On the lower left corner, those are your Walton Lake Water Storage Tanks, and your water storage tanks. Are generally of the same design and era. Um, uh, Walton Lakes is unique, in fact, it has dual water storage tanks. A recommendation, uh, kind of to dovetail on what your general manager said about adding an additional tank at Auburn Lake Trails. Uh, and then, of course, uh, over on the right-hand side is gonna be a typical unlined ditch. As soon as I point at the screen. Well, maybe I can just say next page.
There we go, now you got it.
Okay, very good.
Said to have to get broken out of this number.
Okay, so, uh, kind of as an overview, our objective in this study is to assess, uh, current conditions. Of the district's raw water conveyance system, uh, upstream of their two water treatment plants, so. Our scope for this study is about thirty miles of, of raw water system, mostly ditch. That's thirty miles of about seventy miles of raw water system that, including your system, so not quite half. But it is, uh, certainly, one could argue the more critical half, because it serves both your. Treatment water facilities as well as your, uh, irrigation customers. Ours, our objective was to review your five booster pump stations, your ten water storage tanks, and then, uh, ten selected sections. Of water supply pipelines. It's not reasonable for us to, to, uh, evaluate, you know, a couple hundred miles of, of pipeline. Which you do have, uh, so what the district will do is they will, uh, uh, expose. Dicker sections of pipelines, and I anticipate it's gonna be those sections where maybe there's been some repairs recently, or maybe there. Older pipelines, typically, we can look at your, at your, uh, system improvements and know that. If there's, uh, welded steel pipe or asbestos steel pipe, asbestos cement pipe in your system, which you do have. Uh, those are gonna be your older pipelines, so newer pipelines are really gonna be PVC pressure rated pipe or ducted line. So the objective, again, to kind of, uh, dovetail onto or segue onto your general manager's report, is to come up. Recommended short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term, uh, improvements for system reliability and long-term sustainability. Otherwise, not as a capital. Whoops, and I just shut it off. There you go, okay. Okay, so briefly, scope, raw water. So, um, update field assessment, again, this is, uh, actually my third time walking the ditch. I've been certified as this, as a certified son of a ditch, in my various work with businesses. Uh, this again is the third time that I've been on the GTPD, uh, ditch system. Uh, so again, to update that assessment, assessment, this time. We were, uh, supported by, uh, a geotechnical, uh, consultant. That, uh, helped us assess soil and geological stability conditions, in particular, up in the up-country, uh, area. Um, while there have been a lot of repairs, uh, of course, there are still gonna be some leaks and new leaks that have occurred over the last twenty years, so. Identify those and, and, uh, make better repairs. Check capacity, uh, that's a relatively easy one year, since your flows are reduced, your capacity available is increased. Uh, evaluate the repairs, uh, and to begin to assess what has been done since the, the, the June two thousand and two assessment study. Uh, recommend, um, conveyance improvements, specifically piping of ditch sections and lining of ditch sections. Um, modify, identify improvements to enhance maintenance, so we looked at things even like, um. Uh, improving, um, the grizzly sections on, um, the entrance to, uh, condos. Um, is that, there's a number of those that need to be upgraded. Your, uh, your manager also mentioned about a safety and, um, improvements to the structures. We've also included those in, in our assessments. Uh, access improvements, not just roadway and, uh, and walking access, but just issues with regards to. Those lovely vine groves, very vines that are, seem to be very worse. So, uh, uh, you know, evaluating those and what can be done just as far as trying to control it. And then, uh, identifying emergency storage improvements, there was a comment made earlier about, um. Uh, Auburn Lake Trails, the treated water storage and the impacts, uh, for the necessity, for the criticality of having storage. Under emergency conditions, during your, your mosquito fire, uh, event, certainly, your storage facilities were tested. And, uh, we are, we're taking a serious look and making recommendations as far as. Expanding the storage of Walton, Greenwood, uh, Auburn Lake Trails, uh, as well as adding a new storage reservoir. Right behind you here, uh, on, on property of home by GTPUD. So, um, our scope included evaluating the five booster pump stations, we were assisted there by. Uh, by our electrical engineer to, to review the electrical and control and alarm systems. Uh, looking at the reliability features of those booster pump stations and reviewing operation and maintenance measures. And storage tanks, uh, ten storage tanks, uh, we conducted a field of assessment of your ten tanks. We were supported by our structural engineer, looking at seismic analysis of those tanks. Um, as I mentioned, uh, the, the, the district, uh. Typically has a revolving program as far as tank inspection programs. Uh, we are going to be including those tank inspection results to. Support or, and to supplement to the inspections that we've had, assessments that we've had as part of our final study. Um, as part of the storage tanks to review access and monitoring and control of structural tubes. And reviewing piping, now, when, uh, tank capacity, that's part of the scope. And then finding water supply pipelines, we completed, um, as I said, in two thousand and two. A network hydraulic analysis, basically a computer model of, of your water system. That model has been used by the district over the last twenty years to evaluate when there's new demands come into the system. Uh, you know, how, uh, is your, you know, is your system a, able to meet those new demands? Or what improvements do you need made in order to meet those demands? So there have been, for example, since we did our assessment in two thousand and two, there have been new, evident improvements, for example, the. The shopping area, the intersection of, uh, one ninety-three and, and forty-nine was not there in Cool. Uh, in, in two thousand and two, so that's a new demand, and that's been included in the, in the network analysis. One of the important things as far as, um, supply pipelines is looking at criticality. Um, and there's a lot of critical pipelines within your system, you might say, okay, well, all of our pipelines are critical. They are, some are just more critical than others, pipelines that have a long run. With no looping or, 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 uh, support. I have single pipelines over a long period or long runs, for example, the pipeline that runs down forty-nine to. Serve Pilot Hill is particularly critical pipeline, cause there's one pipeline. If that pipeline goes down, there's no backup for that, so, you know, evaluating those kinds of criticality issues. And then, um, our scope is to include those selected sections of pipe, and then to look at the history of the pipe prepare. Okay, so work products, um, again, um, we, we'll talk about some of the recommendations. That we've made to date, draft recommendations, I'm just happy to hear that. There was no, um, conflict between what your general manager was recommended as far as improvements and. Improvements that we have recommended from our assessment of conditions. Our report, um, has, as we discussed with and directed by Adam, is to break those. Liability measures into kind of short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term. Uh, the district has a, actually, a very good asset management list that you put together on, ten years ago or so. Uh, it does need to be updated, uh, and with, with the assessments and the conditioned assessments that. We have done, we will be updating, uh, that asset management list to include things like expected life, um, condition. Uh, required maintenance measures, uh, and again, critical. And then finally, our scope is to go back and to take that two thousand and two reliability study, which. Study we did, so we certainly have access to it, uh, to update that for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. So what have we done so far? Uh, again, our, our schedule has been a little bit interrupted by fires and snow and rain, but, you know, we. Works ahead, uh, our first, um, uh, assessment was for the up-country, uh, area, started at the top, moving our way down. That was done in, um, in August, after, uh, Adam returned from vacation, so they're gonna schedule his return and. Coordination with, with your staff, uh, so, uh, we, we've, the growth of the, uh, system. Again, about thirty miles of raw water system into five separate assessments, moving from upstream to downstream. So we've done five separate field assessments and recommendations, each applying to each section of those pipelines. Each section of those, those raw water, uh, si- systems. And we've prepared, uh, summary assessments and recommendations to the district on each of those segments. Uh, we have completed the field assessment of five booster pump stations. Again, similar to the, to the, uh, raw water ditch system. Uh, we have, uh, prepared the assessment conditions and made recommendations as far as improvements. Water storage tanks, we have completed the, the field assessment of the ten tanks. We've, we've submitted, uh, the assessment of conditions and draft recommendations as far as the water storage tanks. Uh, staff has not reviewed those recommendations yet, so those will be, uh, updated after we get the comments back from staff. Um, we have done updates to the hydraulic network analysis. And, uh, we have done some select fire flow, uh, analysis that were requested by, by the district. There, uh, as far as the, the GIS database system, uh, uh, with coordination with Adam. Uh, we have taken your paper plans and have. Scanned and digitized them and have, are ready to now upload those into your database. Our, we're supported in this by Ecore Consulting, which does other work for your district. Um, essentially, they're waiting to get all of our material together, all of our assessments, all of our photos, there are many. Uh, and all of our recommendations, and to upload all this at one time, uh, uh, into the database. So that's been partially completed, but still, yes, needs to be. So this is probably pretty familiar to you, this is your ditch system, seventy miles of ditch. Uh, what you see highlighted in yellow and red, that's what we have since August. Um, walked and assessed and made recommendations as far as, uh, improvements. These are those sections of the ditch that are up, uh, upgrading from your Walton Lakes Water Treatment Plant. And from your Sweetwater Trail Water Treatment Plant. If, if I say Auburn Lake Trail Water Treatment Plant, because that's my brain and invented from two thousand and two. Um, one of the same, also known as, so, uh, uh, that, that's the portion that we're completing as part of this scope. Uh, here are spatially your five booster pump stations. Uh, each of this, each of those booster pump stations, you're probably well aware, actually have a rather limited service area. Typically, each serve maybe six to twelve services. Uh, so while they are critical to those services, in the bigger picture. They, they, they probably have less of a hierarchy, if you will, than, than some of your other facilities, but. Your five, uh, pump stations, they're all similar design. Uh, the one that's a little different is the, um, Black Oak, um. Pump station, because it is the only one, Black Ridge, I'm sorry, the Black Ridge Booster Pump Station. It's the only one that's a single pump rather than a dual pump, and it's the one that's identified as number one as far as. Repair and replacement. And then here's your water storage tanks, you have ten water storage tanks, not including Clearwells at treatment plants. Ten water storage tanks, uh, they're all above ground welded steel tanks, they're all similar design, um. They actually added one time the eleventh tank, and that's the, that's the Pilot Hill tank, uh. And that, that has been removed from service. That one was not included within, within the assessments. So all those, uh, we have visited and reviewed, uh, uh, each of those tanks, you know, with our structural engineer. Okay. So what do we do now? So as I mentioned, we started the raw water system, uh, in, in the, above Tunnel Hill. Looked our way down, that was in August, shortly after. After Labor Day, that was the fire. So, um, uh, at, at the request of and direction of, of your operations manager, we will go back to the area. Uh, above Tunnel Hill, as soon as we can get up there and not cause more damage, then good. It's, it's pretty sloppy up there, and it's no point in taking a look, taking the equipment up there and sliding around. It was somewhat ironic, that literally after, hey, cause again, the fire went pretty much all through September, as you all know. But there was a lot of cleanup that continued on through October, and your staff was busy. And so doing, um, you know, accompanying the consultant doing assessment of facilities was not a high priority either. So we were not able to get started again until, until October, and literally, the first day we came back, it was snowy. So, um, uh, early snows, heavy rains, fire, et cetera, we've. We've gotten a little backed up on schedule, but our plan, again, it will stop raining. Our plan is to go back and revisit the area, uh, that was damaged by the mosquito fire. Uh, and we're gonna do that with our geotechnical engineer, who has identified through. Um, through mapping, through soils and geotechnical studies, areas that are particularly subject to slide and erosion. It will be very interesting, I'm sure, for him to now see these areas, as soon as they're not covered with snow. As far as how they have been performing now with the heavy rains. And as your manager mentioned, uh, part of our, uh, recommending improvements will be. Slide erosion and sediment control improvements to reduce to the maximum possible impacts in those open sections of the ditch. Uh, that are in the up-country area. Um, so, uh, again, I mentioned on the water storage tanks, we've done the, the, the field assessments, we've submitted our report. We need to get responses back from, uh, from Adam as far as. What he thinks about our recommendations, and we also want to tie our recommendations in with the tank inspection reports that, that have been done. Our next field assessment will be the water spot, the water supply pipelines, what I'm anticipating is that. Your, your district is willing to expose for us particular problem areas, areas where there's been, you know, repair, history of repairs. Or maybe some older sections of pipe, uh, uh, again, and we'll use that to help, uh, assess those, those sections. And then, um, to do the, uh, asset management GIS database, uh, to, to update and complete the asset list. Findings and recommendations from our field assessments, and then update the two thousand and two water system reliability stack. Adam asked us to say, okay, well, when are you gonna be done? Adam asked us to say, okay, well, when are you going to be done? So, um, weather permitting, uh, we hope our field assessments completed in, in the next two to four weeks. That's going to depend on when we can get up to, back to the up country area. There was one section of up country that we were not able to get to, and that was the piece between Bacon Creek and the product creek diversion. I have previously reviewed product creek diversion, but we were not able to get to it in August because the trail between Bacon Creek and, um, and the product creek diversion was impassable even walking. So we will get to it, um, uh, the operator, uh, Brian, said he can get to it. Like going around kind of via stumping and coming back down to that area. So that's a critical element. Obviously, that's where the water starts is from the product creek diversion, and so we need to include the assessment of the product creek diversion. Once we have all those field assessments and recommendations done, then, uh, Ecore can do the, uh, update, upload all this information. Ideally, your operators are going to be able to click on, on, on a, a location on a map, whether it be ditch, gang, booster pump, section of pipeline, and up is going to come all this information. There are going to come assessments and photos and recommendations. That's the goal, uh, as far as being able to have this information that's accessible. Uh, but also having this, uh, GIS database update will also help us, uh, fine tune, if you will, uh, recommendations as far as what are priority improvements, what are short-term, intermediate-term and long-term improvements. And then, um, to update the, the water system reliability study that we did in two thousand and two. So what we anticipate is that we will make a, a draft report review with the staff, make a presentation to you as far as our draft findings or draft update. Make a, a final submit and let that be it. Again, kind of taking through all this, um, our goal here is to be completed by about the first week or two. Okay. There's a lot of stuff here, and I don't think I'm going to try to go through, through all of them. Um, this is basically a compilation of, of draft improvements from the assessments that we've done to date on the ditch, tank, booster pump station, we will then add whatever pipeline improves. I think that it is, uh, good and, um, it supports what your manager is already talking, talking about. First item on the list is complete safety and access improvements in the up country, up country structures. Okay, so again, relatively short-term, I believe that of the seven structures, two or three have been completed, at least two, maybe three.
Yeah.
Um, so, and it's kind of similar with the gauging stations. There's three gauging stations there now. The district, I do have plans to, to add additional gauging stations. So I'm not going to go through, through all of these because there's just, there's a lot of stuff there and I violate the rules of PowerPoint enough, but too many words on PowerPoint. Um, a couple of things though, that I, that, that I, I would like to point out. And, um, this is, has to do with, uh, spending time with your, with your guys on the ditch. Um, so we talked about equipment. Um, additional brush clearing. Uh, I can't emphasize enough how, how important that would be to the, to the operations of the system. Uh, the guys are out there trying in large part, trying to clear Russian vines with, uh, with with hand tools, and it just doesn't get it. And we walk through sections, and I have photos that I can share with you later, where the vines are completely, according to staff, completely cleared in spring, we could not walk through that, you know, four months later. Those vines are, as you know, amazing. The, the problem being with that is that, that there is really no approved EPA, Regional Water Quality Control Board, Department of Health Service, pre-emergent per size that will allow you to spray up to the edge of water supply ditches. Now, is that going to happen someday? One hopes that someone's going to come up with a safe, pre-emergent spray, which would be a whole lot better than trying to have to cut this stuff back every year, because I think it just makes it mad. It comes back in water. So, um, but in the interim, uh, uh, this, I mean, my manager's not here, maybe just screaming. Um, I, providing a brush, additional brush, you know, would really be, would really be important. Um, one, well, one of the other, uh, areas that, um, that I, I hasn't been discussed, and it seems kind of obvious, is that within your up country, well, within your ditch section, you have a couple of miles of, of pipeline, okay? Uh, and if you look down those pipeline routes, you can kind of sort of tell where those pipelines are. But over the years, there's been brush and trees that have grown in there. And what's going to happen is those brushes and trees are going to get into your pipeline and going to start causing problems. So it's really important that, again, that the clearing and, and brushing of those, those kind of sections, Canyon Creek, Buckeye Conduit, Kaiser Siphon, for example, you know, but that, that being, uh, continued and, and emphasized as, as a, um, um, critical element. One other thing that, that again, I, I suspect that some of you folks have had, heard stories about Kaiser Pipeline. Remember the engineers on the Kaiser Pipeline? Um, it was a emergency repair Kaiser Pipeline serves all of Auburn Lake Trails, everything downstream of it. The pipeline, which was a very thin welded steel pipe, was breaking. I mean, it was breaking, and they were, you couldn't fix it anymore. And so an emergency repair went out and we paralleled that, that pipeline, because it needed to remain in service as best it could until, um, until it was replaced. Can't replace it in place. An existing pipeline has to remain in place. And so we paralleled it with twenty-four inch tactile iron pipe. No easement over that pipe. And so the defense was, well, there was a prescriptive easement. Prescriptive easements work pretty well for ditches. It's open, they're open, they're notorious, they've been in continuous use. Regardless of whether or not there's a written easement over there, any property owner can see, hey, there's a ditch going across my pipe. Conduits, not so much. There are lagging, there's, there's, there are some facilities, ARVs, uh, some, some paddle markers along the pipeline. But for someone who is buying a piece of property, they don't look at that property and go, gee, there's a pipeline going across. We've gone through, to be said, that we could within our budget and scope and have identified from mapping, we can get maps pretty easily, where, where easements have been recorded. Now, in order to determine how many other areas where you don't have easements, you need, you need to get preliminary tire reports, you know, on a lot of projects. That's a task that needs to be done. And when you need to record those easements, we don't want to go through what we did with the Kaiser Siphon, PM. Okay, so, I mean, I'll get off my siblings, but there's, again, there's, there, there's a number of issues there. That, that's a couple of that, you know, that maybe not come to, come to mind. Um, intermediate, again, continue with the ditch repairs. I would tell you that I am so impressed with the concrete lining that's been done on the ditch, in areas of repairs. They're awesome. Twenty years ago, the, the, the way to, to, uh, repair the ditch was, uh, the district was using gunite lining. The concrete lining is so much better and it's going to last so much longer and it's great. What I, when I saw it there was awesome. That needs to consider in the areas that we've, we've identified as being either new leaks or leaks of work, uh, have been resolved. Um, when we mapped the, the system twenty years ago, we included some of the old gunite line, well, included the gunite lining as being lined. Some of that gunite lining is so paper thin that it's not really lining anymore. And so, uh, there's several areas there that we've identified where that old gunite lining needs to be replaced with, with, with concrete. So again, I won't, I won't go through, uh, with all of these, but this, that's a couple of, of, uh, of highlights. I guess, yeah, one more. The bullet point number three. Probably that, there's probably very few people that have actually gone up and, and walked the up country section above Tunnel Hill. It's heavily treed, but was, um, on fire. And there are every year, or you do the district operator, there are major trees that fall across the ditch. You don't pull those off with a skid steeder or a piece of equipment. Those guys need some heavy duty equipment. It's a big ticket item, but a, a, a piece of equipment like a CAT thirty-five excavator would do it. So again, to consider in the wish list, be, uh, would be some heavy equipment specifically for up country. Couple of other things, I know Adam has applied for funding for the, for, for widening of the narrows. It's the one section of the up country ditch that you can't drive on. It's a problem because you can't get from, if you can't get around it, you gotta go around through logic, come back down again, it's just not convenient. Uh, so that is a, that is certainly a very important, uh, an area to, to consider in your intermediate, um, uh, improvements. And then kind of the last one, and your manager mentioned it. Well, if there was a wish list, if we could, if we could replace those open sections of pipeline up country with, uh, with pipe conduits, it would solve a lot of problems. You know, as far as, uh, slides, sure you don't get me in there, it would solve a lot of problems. Okay, long-term, very vines, someone's going to come up with a pre-emergent spray that's safe to use. Hey, um, uh, again, complete piping of up country ditch, complete lining of sections down in the, below up country. And then twenty years from now, someone's going to do a twenty forty-two, forty-three assessment of conditions. Probably not going to be needed. Uh, if someone else will come along and shoot this. I don't, still be around.
You might be out there.
I might be out there. I, I, I impressed some of your operators that I was still able to get around. Okay. Booster pump stations, I don't want to, I don't want to discount because they only serve a limited amount of persons. But the way your booster pump stations currently operate now, they're all the same. Operator goes out once a week and checks the pump, and for the two pump stations, he switches from pump one to pump two. As we does. So there's no control and there's no monitoring available. So if you switch to over pump number one and pump number one fails, then no water. Again, it's only a few residences, but for those residents, they're not real happy when they have really had water. So having, um, uh, having some monitoring of, 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 of the performance included in the, in, in the recommendation of improvements, um, is, will be included as far as, as far as, and there is a way to be able to do that. Now, the other thing is that, uh, these booster pump stations obviously are located in areas where we have power outages. The power outages, we have no power, we have no pumping. So, uh, there, there, the district does have a mobile generator, but there's really no easy way to roll up that mobile generator and hook up those pumps, okay? So, um, you know, we need to be able to, to, uh, wire and provide for, uh, uh, state, basically an extension cords from those, from those pump stations, so that, so the, uh, mobile operator comes up, he's got a standby generator. He switches, he goes inside, he switches from line power to, to template power, and he fires up the generator now. Keep doing that.
Good correction. We do not have mobile generators. That's okay.
That, that, well, I indicated that we need a, we need a mobile
We do.
generator for dedicated to the, to the pumps, okay? Um, again, modifying the, the power distribution pump control, that's to provide exterior plugs, provide, uh, for the generator. Uh, and then this is kind of a wish list cellular-based system and RTU equipment to remotely monitor booster pump systems. Your tanks, you can monitor, and they do monitor remotely, booster pump stations. Okay, storage tanks. I'm winding down it. Um, and ten, ten tanks, um, uh, the two tanks that would be, uh, top on the list as far as maintenance, Auburn Lake Trails, it's number one. We, we call that Hotchus Hills Tank as being the other one to be next on the list. My sense of dear ravine, that it was, had been coated more recently than Hotchus Hills. We'll look at your, we'll look at the, uh, the reports. But it appears to us to be Hotchus Hills and Auburn Lake Trails to be the next priority as far as, uh, maintenance and coating. Steel tanks, they are protected by this very, very, very thin layer of coating. And when that coating gets compromised, now you have corrosion. Really important that those tanks maintain as far as the coating interior and exterior, especially interior. We have conducted, uh, all your tanks, uh, none of your tanks, except one have, have anchorage. Um, typically, um, if you have short fat tanks, they're stable. Tall skinny tanks, not so much. So we were concerned about Hotchus Hills and Auburn Lake Trails. We've done a seismic analysis and they all passed as far as that part. So none of your tanks require, uh, anchorage. However, we're concerned that all of your tanks, uh, that there's no separation between, between the pipeline and the tank as far as the flexible connection. If there's movement, since the event, now that pipe is going to snap. Because the tank is fixed, if, if the soil moves, now it's going to be a break. All the tanks that we do, now done the last hundred years, all have flexible connections between the, the piping, pipe inlet, outlet and the tanks. So that is a, a, a repair that we're, or modification that we recommend. The other one that we recommend in particular for well and still tanks is cathodic protection. That's something that can be retrofitted on your existing tanks. And what that does is that extends the life of your coating. In particular, the interior coating, which is the coating you can't, you don't see. Exterior coating you can see, ah, that tank is starting to feel, it needs to be coated. You don't look inside that, inside the tank, and you really can't look inside the tank very easily uh, on a, on a daily basis or weekly basis or monthly basis. Cathodic protection will extend the life of those, uh, that tank. We provide mixing on tanks. I talked to the, uh, operators, they didn't think that was a big issue, however, uh, we know that the Hotchus Hills sub-tank and at least one of the other tanks, I can remember, uh, does require periodic flushing because it doesn't, mixing, there's no mixing there. And it does need to have mixing. Again, those recommendations are included in the findings that we provided to the district. Um, finally, okay, so. Questions? Sorry, I'm not slow.
I just had one right off the bat, which mixing?
Okay, so a tank, it's what's called thermal stratification.
Mm-hmm.
And all your tanks, again, this is not a criticism, this is the way And all your tanks, again, this is not a criticism, this is the way we used to do tanks. Water comes in the bottom, goes out the bottom. Okay? If you were to go to the top of that tank, open up the hatch, you would get a blast of hot air during the summer. Because that water is gonna get hotter and hotter as it goes up, okay? And the cool, cool water sinks, the hot water rises, so now you have no mixing. Okay? You get thermal stratification. So not a problem usually when you're just kind of average day demand, you're taking that same water in and out of the bottom. Now you've got a big demand and that stale water that's been sitting on top goes into your distribution system. And then Adam gets called saying, my water doesn't taste. And that's by providing mixing, now you break up that thermal stratification. Again, the way tanks were done back in the day, the way your tanks are, you go, things like inlet in the bottom, outlet in the bottom. It's not the way we do tanks anymore. Water was in the top, out the bottom. Water goes on one side of the tank, comes out the other side of the tank. So that provides some mixing, but then we also supplement it with some uh, uh, internal mixing. That's something that can be retrofitted. It's a mixing device that sits at the bottom of the tank, need power. So some of the tanks, pretty remote, I'm thinking of the garden, garden park tank, it's pretty remote. They have solar mixers.
Yeah, solar.
You can do that. So that's, that's an issue. So um, again, probably one of these things that when you go to look to replace tanks, add tanks, separate in on the outlet, in the top, out the bottom, flexible connections, cathodic protection, mixing. Those are all the things that we do have.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
So um, I guess one of the things on the, on the, on the tanks as far as criticality. Of all the tanks uh, that you have, Walton Lake banks are certainly the most critical for your Walton Lake system. Your Auburn Lake tank is the most critical for your Auburn Lake system. I think it's one tank, Walton Lakes is two tanks. It's great because you've got flexibility, you can take one out of service. Very difficult to take the Auburn Lake Trail. Uh, 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 I'm sorry, Angel Camp, thank you, the Angel Camp tank out of service. One is critical to the system and number two, it don't, at least what we can find from our review improvement. There's no easy way to isolate that tank. So you can't take it out of service. And so it needs some valving and it needs some piping in order to be able to bypass that tank for a period of time. So those customers would be served directly from the pump station from the treatment plant for that period of time when that tank is taken out of service. I suspect that's a large part why that tank hasn't been taken out of service. Because it doesn't have that flexibility to be able to bypass, it needs to have.
Thank you. Treasure Thornburg?
But rather than retrofit the tank to put in a uh, um, what do you call it, agitator thing? Why couldn't we just reroute the incoming pipe up to the top? Just weld the flame joint and, and route it to the top of the tank and that way we don't have to worry about power to stir it and and it would solve the problem, make it more like the new tanks are.
And do that, we can do that. Uh, and um, when you do that, of course you, typically you would take the, you would take the inlet um, pipe, you wanna protect it, so you'd probably take it up inside the tank. And weld it on with, with supports to the inside of the tank. Now you have also damaged the inside of the tank, so it's gotta recode it. So it was a job there. Okay, so it can be done and, and, and certainly as you look at new tanks, it's certainly a really strong recommendation. Separate inlet, outlet, up in the top, out the bottom. Uh, but retrofitting, there is a project here in order to do that, can be done, yes.
Thank you.
And, and that's one part. And typically, again, depending on location, conditions, whatever, we do, we do, and maybe it's kind of belt and suspenders, separate inlet, outlet, high-low opposite side of the tanks. And typically you do provide a mixer.
Thank you. Base President Seaman.
Um, did you do any assessment on the tunnel?
We did not. No, Adam asked about that. It was not in our scope. Uh, we can look to see who does tunnel assessments. I have some young engineers that would love to go and take a raft and go through that tunnel. Not probably gonna be me, but, but uh, I guess.
Twenty years.
Yeah, right. Twenty years ago I might have done. Um, there, there are firms that do uh, that do assessments of rock. Doing tunnels, I assume that that's what that is. Um, but we, we have not included that in our scope. We can, but we have not.
So there's a source to find somebody to do this, Nick?
Yeah, yeah, we're utilizing all, all of our resources.
And then um,
And we're looking for someone too.
Thank you. Um, so then on the, uh, let's see what you have on there. So you had the monitoring of the pumps, um, since it's an on-off kind of thing. Um, is there some way that, that maybe uh, they, weren't they like a low-key version of putting something downstream on the flow? Uh, that would shoot a signal and, and, and give it, so then you would have flow, no flow, you would know right off.
You're, you're pumping a field, right? So the, the pump goes on, off. So if you try to monitor the second, but there's gonna be lots of times when there's no flow in that pipe.
Okay.
Alright. So, but there is, without getting too geek engineer here, that we can, we can uh, install an RTU remote uh, unit, okay? That RTU can send a signal in the cellular based internet system, which can then provide the operator on his pad or in a central location. Some, uh, similarly what you do for your tanks, because they, the operators can monitor the tanks continuously with the, with the pressure transducers that you have. Same sort of monitoring can be done. Question is, is it cost effective to do that for those limited service areas? That's a question.
Right. And um, what I wanna thank you for bringing up the prescriptive easements and uh, these recorded and unrecorded easements, because that's been something on the irrigation committee, we've been beating that one up and it kind of falls on deaf ears. And also that uh, berry vine issue. And since you did it in two thousand and two versus two thousand and twenty-two, is, is there been any improvement at all? Or are we just growing more berry vines?
Well, the concrete lining helps. I mean, as far as the invasion of the berry vines, you know, into the, to the upper sections of the ditch. As far as growth, no. They're just as vigorous as they were. I mean, there are some, there are some, we, we, we divided the sections up, as I said, the, the thirty miles into five trips. Upcountry, we went through seven miles, no problem. We get down from, from, from below Tunnel Hill down to Walton Lakes.
Yeah, can't see.
It was, it was a struggle in some places to make a model. I mean, it just, it, it's hard, slowly.
Oh, that's nice irrigation we're having right now, it's helping a little bit.
Yeah, I love that.
Well, no, I mean, there's, it's sort of clearing and, and flushing out all the big stuff through, it feels nice.
I mean, I, I, I spent a, a lot of time trying to research and try researching pre-emergent uh, applications for berry vines.
Nothing I knew as remedy.
And I mean, it's there, they, they have it. But it's not safe to use next to, next to water supply.
Right.
And so now, I don't wanna be the one to recommend a pre-emergent chemical that now gets toxic chemicals into your waters.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a ag department licensed applicator and
Okay.
So um, you're correct, uh, because it'll grow by seeds. So if you apply a pre-emergent on the surface and you know, there's a barrier to germinating seeds, but they travel by roots below ground.
Yeah, they are tough, as you know.
Um, we have uh, oh. No, so we gotta hang on May till directors are through.
You mentioned on page twelve, protecting the wood flume structure with some approved coating. I know with the Caldo Fire Eldorado Irrigation District, they had about fifty million dollars damage to their structure, which included a lot of wooden flume. Um,
We did find an NSF sixty-one approved coating.
Is that something that is for fire or, because I'm concerned about fire where there's wooden flumes?
Okay, it's um, it, we were not specifically making it a fire retardant. It's something that would be safe to use for water supply structures. Now there was a coating.
A coating, yeah.
That's safe for facilities that deliver water to, for drinking water supply.
What's your recommendation on replacing the wood flume part of the structure?
Well, you just replaced one, it's a relatively new structure, it's, it's, you know, it looks in pretty good shape, I would say. It needs to have some protective coating. Um, I can, can it be, can they be replaced? Yes, there's gonna be a lot of ditch that needs to be constructed in order to to replace it, because now you're gonna have to go up the draw, back down again in order to continue with the gravity moving system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Saunders.
Is there any way to get rid of that wood and go to something uh, that's a little less fire?
Oh, sure, steel.
Yeah, that's, because that was one thing, when I first saw that wood, I was like, yo, uh, we're in fire country and we're gonna shut that whole water system down with that wood sitting there. And what's that logic?
Yeah, now there's, in the three miles that we looked at, there's two. It's, it's just two of them. I can't recall twenty years later if there are other wooden flumes further downstream. There's only two. Um, yes, you can do concrete, steel, absolutely.
But wouldn't that be a recommendation versus, I mean, for reliability?
As far as long-term?
Director Saunders.
Thank you.
Thank you for uh, we're fortunate to have our past, we do it again, because we have the uh, knowledge and experience so you can keep with the consistency. And um, it's also fortunate that you came before the fire, now we can also get this uh, evaluation of the erosion and all of that.
Right.
I mean, there was a control and all of that.
There was a silver lining associated with that part and that might be one.
Yep. So one of the things, uh, speaking of fire with the pumping stations, are you doing any recommendations for firehards? Because I know there are wooden structures there as well.
We, we have not yet. Again, it's cost versus benefit. They, they serve such a small area. Uh, yeah, can you put up concrete bunkers or, you know, you can put, you can put the pump station below ground as far as that, you could put them involved. We're really concerned about fire. I mean, we're taking our advisement, talking management.
And that would be something that, that we'd probably focus on a grand four.
Yeah, I was um, I was surprised that those wood structures were, were not uh, insulated. And without, and, and the piping inside was not, you know, wrapped for frost protection. I said, Tom, do you have issues with the freezing in here? And I said, haven't had so far, I mean.
That's scary.
Okay.
We've had more insect problems than that. And then the other thing is our, are you looking at any of the uh, redundancy or secondary source reliability of that, you know?
Well, and, and I appreciate your, your gentleman talking about the uh, pump station on the North Fork of the American River. Because twenty-five years ago or better, when that project was around, I thought it was dead. So the fact that there is still life to that project, hallelujah. I mean, if there's any sort of long-term reliability, having two sources of water, rather than having one ditch that's hanging on the side of a cliff, out of sight, that would be awesome to have a second source downstream, absolutely.
The loom like one is a difficult one.
Absolutely. But I, I, again, I thought it's environmental, because of regulations, that it was dead. It's alive, yeah. That's gonna be long-term improved.
May.
Thank you for telling us all of this. I mean, water seems like it's so simple, you know, it's there. But when I hear all that you have to go through or we have to get it drinkable, safe water in our house, I mean, this is really, you, as a water department, you've really done a lot of work. I mean, it isn't so simple. Thank you, thank you.
Opened up your eyes, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I've been I'm not telling, not, this is not my first rodeo, but so I've been an engineer for fifteen years. And when a client comes in and says, I got this project, my first question is, where are you getting your water? Says, we can, we can treat water, we can pump water, we can stir water. Yeah, make. And so if you, that's the first question, is where are you getting your water? It's again, being a civil engineer, I'm considered the most critical of the industry.
Director Thornburg?
As far as piping up country, um, you know, I definitely see there's a benefit of that, of piping the canal, but it seems to me that we would lose a lot of water, because when it rains and you have the runoff, it kind of goes in the ditch and we get all that extra water. Um, the other issue with piping is if something gets in there and you have a pretty lengthy run of pipe, and you know, how are you gonna get that out? So I, I can see the benefits of piping, but I also see some issues with piping. And I know that not too long ago, Plasterell had a big problem because EID piped a section of canal and the water running down the hill, didn't, couldn't go in the ditch anymore. It ended up flooding businesses and stuff down below because they piped the ditch. So I know we don't have that problem here, but I'm thinking about up country, you know, we, I'm pretty sure we get quite a bit of water from runoff that built that land.
So there are seven structures, plus the Bacon Creek diversion, so there's eight. So right now you have eight locations, I guess you probably don't get a water at two, two, uh, structure seven. Probably got seven structures, I won't count number seven. Those structures uh, do take inside water. Okay, and so piping the ditch would not eliminate those structures and the ability to take inside water. So piping it would not reduce the amount of benefit that you could get from that runoff. In those other areas, by and large, between those structures, you don't have runoff sheet flowing into your ditch. It's not the way it's, it's not the way it's built, it's not the way it's designed. You do have at areas where you have draws or diversions, natural diversions, you do have structures that will take that water and put it in the ditch. Those would be retained. Sure. Okay, so, so that would be, that answers the, the first question. I'm sorry, I got off on that. What was the, the second one about? One one was. Okay, so. Okay, so at the front end of each opening, there, there is a facility called a grizzly, okay? Which is a rack, a bar rack, if you will.
I know what it is.
Which keeps debris from getting into those, those pipe sections. So as long as those grizzlies are maintained, and we've got some recommendations, some good examples and some not so good examples, then you can keep the debris from, from getting into, into as far as the big stuff. And you can also have clean outs, you know, you know, on the pipeline, that you can drain sections of pipe if they get too much sediment. You know, that's things that engineers should be thinking about when they do stuff like that. But yes, those, those are issues and, and they need to be addressed. But I, those are, those are issues that can be resolved and we can respond to those.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to also answer your question, Director Thornburg. Any of the areas that we are looking to pipe are strategic locations. Um, so we are definitely taking into consideration all of those environmental concerns and flooding runoff, all that stuff. Uh, we've actually even come up with additional design criteria for those surface diversion structures in case we do pipe around them so that we can still capture that. in case we do pipe around them so that we can still capture that runoff flow.
Dirk Saunders.
Uh, so the one thing is, uh, we, fortunately now we do have an ease before the Kaiser, uh, the Kaiser pipe after. That was, that was one of the things we put in the settlement. Uh, the other thing is, um, seeing that we're doing the assessment, this is more of a comment than a question for you. Seeing we're doing the uh putting in the GIS and assets and the assessment management. If we can add on the assessment management policy, so it comes up earlier, this way we can, uh, for the ad hoc policy committee. This way we make sure that we're capturing anything on the product and the asset management.
Sure, you could reach out and email. I would be happy to add that. Put it on the list.
Sheree.
So you did say you did the original on two thousand two. Uh, I meant, we're very impressed when I first, I didn't read through the whole thing, but I'm glad you're, and I'm glad they got it. Um, just a factoid, that Pilot Hill tank was sold to a resident I think nearby back in two thousand nineteen. And also, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, EID got grants for mobile generators. I turned in the uh, Mountain Democat report to Steve Palmer and Silk Chappin. I mean, EID got a grant. You know, and they're a larger company, so um basically, but I'm, I'm very in the, uh, topic, I guess.
And um I just want to make a closing comment. We take care of evaporation and vegetation offsetting the anything to zipping right along. I think that's it, uh. Oh, he's back? Okay. Director Thornborough.
I would like to say, since you brought up closing comment, I would like to say that I very much appreciate the compliments that you gave in the beginning to our staff. And I mean, that, to me, that speaks volumes about the, the good work that our staff is doing. And uh, I for one really appreciate the, the, the compliments for that.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
And, and I, again, kind of my closing comment, I want to thank Adam for his supervision and direction on all this because everything that we've done have gone through Adam and have been directed by him. But, you know, we, what we have done so far has been greatly enhanced by your operators. So Brian Stiles, Jeff Khan, Chris Khan, and Jason Smith at different parts have accompanied us. And it is through their eyes in a lot of respects that we see, you know, some of these things that need to be done. And so yes, hopefully we add things that we see from the outside. These are guys with, you know, boots on the ground, they see it every day. And we need to get, it's very important that we get their input and we have included their input.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And maybe you could have an awards banquet. It's a, it's your engineering firm for being the most.
Thank you very much. Let me use that castle reporter as a blueprint for CIP.
Yeah, okay, excellent, outstanding. Alexis, would you kindly uh lead us with the Water Resources Management Report? Thank you very much.
Okay, and.
Oh.
Well, okay, so I assume I've run long, I did. So I do have photos, but they're not part of the presentation, so I don't know if it's appropriate.
You leave them right there, yeah.
So again.
Thank you, sir.
Over you of, of, of the ditch and different locations.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Go ahead, please, Alexis.
Uh, so Brian, you had a hundred and fifteen routine inspections. Exros are still low at five, um. From those, that's from the visitor who was on tape, that was one. We've got one new trial plan in review. Uh, we had Fire Safety Council meeting was on the sixth that I attended. The annual zone report was during February first. I had a sanitary sewer management plan workshop on the sixteenth, and then there's an Upper American River watershed meeting on the seventeenth, which I also attended. Uh, Brian did confined space force training. We got ground monitoring, well sampling, or mounds, mound sampling done. Um. And then on the current report, the numbers were actually a little messed up on the sweet waste water discharge. Do I have to amend them? And then I think we're gonna try and change it to make it read a little bit easier, but that first large number, it's eight eighty-six or eight hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred gallons. That's the total flow through Station sixteen for the entire month. So the smaller number should have been thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-three. That's our average in ones per day. And our permit is for seventy-one thousand eight hundred gallons in average per day. So we didn't exceed it this month. We did last month, but we had ninety-nine something. But those numbers were off and I apologize for that. Uh, we did have eight point zero five inches of rainfall at the sweet water treatments plant. And then um, oh, I also noticed for some reason, my monthly average CDF wastewater discharge chart on that um, turn one. It wasn't pulling data from the correct spots, so I updated that, so it will be fixed from here on out. And then uh, for a WDR update, we received a draft on a work plan that's under the county last week. We're gonna review that and send that in as soon as we get that looked at and approved red. And then there was a CDS slip station visit for the evaluation that was done on March second, and I'm in the gathering documents portion of that right now, cause Bennett wants some other easement paperwork and some other stuff like that.
Comments, questions from the board? Uh, Director Saunders.
If I have asked questions, so uh, was there any update on the permitting study that's going on?
Yeah. The WDR?
Hmm.
Yeah, so we were we're about to turn in the draft work plan to the county. We're just, I think Adam and I are gonna kind of go over it one last time with the comms. And that's gonna be given to the Environmental Management Department for them to look over and see if they want to take over those onsite wastewater systems or at least the conventional ones. And then that CDF lip, lip station visit was done with Bennett on the second. And that one, uh, they emailed us back and they asked for a couple items to be able to start with that whole, whole thing. So we'll see where that goes.
Okay, were there any of all sewer system on outflow, overflows?
There was none for February, no, but uh, I think it was two in January. So I think that and then eight inches of rainfall, January, we got hammered, you know, with that snow and then rain and then it melted. So we'll see how it goes. And then we got lucky with, it didn't really snow that much in Arizona. So I don't, I'm not sure. Oh, and we switched out, we've got one, we have three pumps. We have one that we keep for backup. It, one was switched out and sent in for repair. And Brian called in today and mentioned that that new pump is pumping like a hundred and seventeen something gallons per minute. So it's, it's keeping up better with these heavy rainfall flows, the other one. So we're hoping when we get that old one back, that's rebuilt, it's gonna be able to operate on the same level, but we won't know until we switch it out. And we don't do that until the, there's a moisture content line that goes off in there. Then we'll switch it out. So we'll see.
Yeah. And then I did some correspondence on uh, with our leak field capacity to make sure we don't uh exceed the permit, so we'll keep track of that on our um on the reports. And it was only once, if it's gone multiple, then we're probably gonna start having to look at mitigation events with these atmospheric ripper things. And I also talked about um, our sewer system management plan also has uh, some maintenance things that we have to do, so if we can.
Yeah, it's due, it's due June fifth, I believe, the update. And that's why I went to this uh, SSMP workshop on the sixteenth.
Yes.
I had combed through it already, looking at the state regulations that they changed. But this workshop was put on by like four guys that retired from wastewater, and then now that's all they do is update like uh, what would they be like that? Consultants now, so they were combing through everybody's SSMPs and telling them what to update, but I went to that to kind of just check off my boxes and make sure that I got everything taken care of. And so in between reporting that we have due and then all the escrows and stuff like that, I'm, I'm slowly chipping away at that management plan.
And if our permit changes, then we may have to.
Right, and it'd be like a step forward.
A step back.
Yeah.
Before we make any wholesale changes, we're trying to get that process, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Director Seaman.
It gives me the back of the head. So, in, in, in doing that TDS plan and uh, looking at the changes to a permit, are are you having to assess the influent filtration going into the system?
So we've been paying attention to that for years.
Or kind of reduce it or figure out how to reduce it?
Yeah, so we have already in our current management plan, a lot of uh things that we do to try and fix that. Uh, we do smoke testing, we do cammering of those lines, we do the manhole covers and inspections and recoding. Um. A lot of the time we can catch some stuff from those escrow or those annual inspections, if there's something funky going on. But we, we haven't really been able to really pin it to one.
So you haven't smoked the house yet?
We haven't, and I have that on my radar actually to start looking, but now with the rain, I'm, I'm kind of putting it off a little bit, cause I have to pick a month where, you know, it'll be.
The other one is fence posts.
Yeah, during them right into somebody's line. Well, we did find two clean outs that were both um, ALT, HOA, BOAs that either broken or no covers.
Right.
We got those fixed.
Yeah.
So I, I mean.
Maybe, the only other thing I would suggest is maybe go with um an education little to ALTs, little meetings that this gentleman tends to go to.
Yeah.
Um, to, to tell them what to look for, what to not look for.
She's gonna be presenting at the town hall meeting, so it will be.
Well, I mean, specifically for influent filtration.
Yeah.
Correct, and we're gonna make that, it's not necessarily a, a, you know, a point of contention, but just something to mention in her, in in her presenting.
Yeah, I wouldn't call it a point of contention, it's just unaware of what putting a fence in, doing whatever can actually have an effect on the system.
Right.
Um, just an awareness of.
Moving on to committees. Finance Committee. Chairman Miller won't be present due to uh, last minute extenuating family dynamics. Uh, I do know that uh, we have three candidates for uh, membership on the Finance Committee. And um one couldn't make it this uh, go round, so we're gonna extend, uh, have that election or interview and election selection um in April, but I'd like to hand it over to Nicholas to make further comment.
Yeah, the, the update to the Finance Committee was we did another, a review of the budget. Um, there wasn't much to discuss. Uh, originally we were going to update committee uh, uh officer positions, and that was tabled until the next meeting. I believe uh, Chairman Miller wanted to have more folks on the committee before we made any updates to the uh, the sitting positions. And uh there was a, a brief grant update of the same grants that had been uh, noted in the board meeting.
Thank you, Nicholas. Uh, Irrigation Committee Report.
Um, nobody's uh, Ray isn't here. Fran was on and it looked like she's come off. Our next meeting is on Thursday. Um, and part of it, they just, oh. And my co-director at, on the committee, Mr. Director Thornborough. Um, we're gonna discuss, they're gonna be discussing the ordinance and hopefully, you know, tweaking it down, if they have any more issues on it. And then hopefully we'll s- see it as a board. And that's it.
That's it. Thank you.
What did we discuss around the irrigation committee? Wasn't that the one to start the the policy flow?
Well, yeah, we were supposed to get the flow numbers and that's uh, supposed to be something that's coming to the board or coming to the Irrigation Committee, and the Irrigation Committee is supposed to give a recommendation for the April meeting for whether it stays at May first or it changes
May fifteenth.
To May fifteenth.
Well, is that earliest you can do with May fifteenth? If you wanna push it beyond the May fifteenth, because we have to have thirty days beyond the April eleventh board meeting date.
I've seen snow in July. I mean, yeah, like June, June. So, anything can happen.
Right, so that, that's what, what I recall, what we're gonna be going over. And then I'm probably gonna bring up some of the report that was given by Cass, Casserole, which is something that's been discussed over and over and over about ditches, cleaning, easements, no easements. And just let them know that's a, a report that will be coming out.
You could, we could uh, put it uh not necessarily as a presentation, but we can attach it as something to.
Yeah, just information given to them, because that's something that's been a ongoing issue. Excuse me, have a.
Wasn't there a policy discussion? I thought, didn't that get done?
That's what I just said, we were going to be discussed.
Still discussing.
They're, they're finalizing the, the ordinance.
Yeah, that will be on Thursday, and then it'll come to the board.
If, if it gets approved at the.
There was a few more changes that wanted, they wanted to have a, a one more review of those changes.
Yeah.
So, and then we're also going to found the letter that you were referring to, this, it's the backdoor letter that you were referring to. So that we did find that letter for the irrigation.
Hello, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so next meeting will be Thursday the sixteenth then, okay. Ad hoc.
Two P M.
Two P M. Ad hoc Grant Writing Committee, Director Saunders or Mr. Stovall, uh, somebody like to.
Yeah, we didn't have a, we didn't have a meeting this time around. We worked on the grants that were put forward for the uh, Fire Safety Council one in our next meeting.
Well, our next meeting will be April fifth. Uh, as of right now, we don't have any prospective uh, grants uh, saved for any paperwork that has to be put forward for the appropriation earmarking.
Thank you. Ad hoc Committee for Policy Manual, next meeting on March twenty-third. Uh, Director Saunders or Seaman.
So basically, uh, we have a report from uh, Gloria from the Ad hoc Policy Committee. It's uh states the purpose of the policies and the last couple of policies we've been going over. It's also to look at, you know, making sure we standardize everything. So when we actually do do a board policy, there's a standing way from once we approve it to how it gets shown on the website and goes into a policy manual and also the way it's um, labeled where it's standardized so people can find it easily when they're searching for it. So that's also part of it. So uh the main ones we were doing is the uh, update on the Personnel Manual. Uh, the uh, continuing with the Special District Leadership Foundation to make sure we go through the checklist so we can uh re-label the District of Distinction Program and the District Transparentsity Script with this. And um, we're also, um, the other policies, we have two that we're bringing forward to the board, the Injury Illness Prevention and the um teleconference policy, so those will be coming through now. We are working on the uh procurement policy, that's with Gloria, that will come back to us for review again. What a transfer policy, secret policy, and the section of the rapid prevention. And we'll add the asset management as well, since that's being worked on to make sure the things we want to be um that the board can see, it's put into the active management list, so you don't have to go backwards to do it. And I know um, our general manager is um pretty enthusiastic and thinking that we will finish by June thirtieth. That's like innovation, but I don't think we will, we will beat that, but we will, we will, we will work as hard as we can to try and get all the policies done, but.
We're gonna make, we're gonna drive this shit, we're really, we're. We do meet, we talk, we are too much. Uh, I, I wanna make sure that you mentioned the Personnel Manual is also coming back from legal, I didn't, I didn't know if you were.
Yeah, so just uh, we had a Personnel Manual coming back from legal as well as.
Okay, I will be adding that back to them, I believe, uh uh, the, the attorney said next to me.
One of them or both of them?
It's uh, actually not this attorney, it's another attorney in their office who does all their personnel and HR compliance. Uh, so they're gonna do a, a, a report out to us, and then we'll basically give that to the Policy Committee of what the changes were and, and why. Most of legalese uh, changes. Um, and then if we do, or when we do have any renegotiations for labor, we just need to be aware that some of that could change again because of. we just need to be aware that some of that could change again because of specific negotiation points, but anything that's legal, that's in the law, will will obviously not be able to be negotiated out by the by the
And one other thing we were talking about too is on the I I P P, that when it goes to J P I A and comes back, we should be having a presentation.
Getting your presentation today.
Yep. So that's why we're 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 getting a presentation today, because it was like he goes out, comes back, and and who knows?
It just came back at the end of February, so we actually just, it just literally came back as you were asking for it.
Let me check with the keeper of acronyms, what's I I P P?
Injury and Health Prevention Plan.
Oh, it's right.
Didn't you find that yet?
Uh, just barely. Okay, um, Shereen.
Did you, wait, wait, do you have a question? Good, sorry about that.
Okay, the last meeting, I think it was an improvement putting on the next meeting day. Problem that I just see is that when the finance committee, we don't know which meeting dates they're talking about when they give their report. There's a possibility putting.
Uh well, but the word next adds a, we should say word next, I thought.
Well, no, I mean, no, yeah, that should say next, but in your like, he did it, what, February twenty-third? So when Steve Miller, he was here giving the report, but it's not stating what they're going to report.
Okay, we'll come up.
I mean.
We'll try to figure out something to to make it clear.
I mean, it's due November.
June and version sort of.
Well, two, yeah, three, yeah, twenty-three.
Let's see, we'll uh we'll try to kind of do something.
I mean, they're giving a report, but it's like, what date? I mean, that's been forever, so.
At least we're getting the days of when they're coming up, so that's good. We're we're small changes, small victory.
Okay. Thank you for that. Looks like the ad hoc committee for audit committee and the ad hoc labor negotiations can be at no meetings.
Correct.
So moving right along to action items. Uh A, consider California's Special District Association Board C S D A nominations.
Uh so this is a uh a required resolution. Uh I I myself am nominated, was nominated by a fellow C S D A member and have applied to become a board member for the C S D A. It would be uh seat C, there are three seats, they are a three-year term. Uh and so they rotate through every year, a new seat is seated. Um uh there is no guarantee that I will be put on this, I am kind of new to the district, so unfortunately, that does not bode well for my my nomination, but I'm gonna go, I would go, going to go forward with it. I already have uh an active with C S D A, I do their their classes, I also serve on the Finance Committee uh for them, so uh more or less, I'm seeking the board's uh nomination recommendation for me to seek this board position.
Okay. Thank you, Nicholas. Any uh questions for clarification or comment?
Just a minute action.
Minute action? Oh, we also have to uh provide.
Oh, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a resolution, but the basically any any minutes.
Okay.
Okay, since there's no comments from the board, any from the public? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the revolution uh accepting the nomination of Nicholas Sander to the C S D A board.
Oh, second.
Second.
Director Seaman seconds.
I'll third it.
Director Thornborough thirds it. Can we get a roll call, though, please?
Aye.
Uh Director Saunders.
Aye.
Uh Director Treasurer Thornborough.
Aye.
And Vice President Seaman.
Aye.
And President.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so the next uh item is a nomination, it's another nomination to the local area information commission, also known as L A F C O. Uh this is to approve a resolution nominating Director Saunders to serve as a special district commissioner. I'll let Director Saunders uh talk uh about his tendency for this position and the importance of it.
Yep, so uh this is the local area information meeting, it uh basically is kind of the only bird, dog, watchdog organization we have for special districts, uh covers cities, special districts that uh pretty much does any uh annexing, uh anything that's going to be uh evolved or new formation of cities. But ultimately, we uh we take up if there is uh someone within a district that wants to be part of a district. And one of its other things is to help prevent uh sprawl. In one of the, yeah, I'm in an alternate for the last four years, and I'm hoping to either be a commissioner or alternate again. And we're a pretty steep learning curve, because you have to learn a lot, and especially with the municipal service reviews. I'd hope to stay in because we're trying to do things such as find a way to uh get thirteen uh fire districts to work well within the county and not go bankrupt, and especially when we're dealing with wildfire or the importance of having um a minimum of three uh staff per station and seeing that there is no appetite to accept the segments for um increasing, they all are half struggling with maintaining our money. And also to be able to uh continue to uh help look over Grisland Flats to make sure they're able to continue their operations, so one of the things I'm able to provide is a good background on water for us and keep showing the significance and importance of uh some of the bills and things that come through with water that they don't realize would have a significant impact on us. I know the uh my bioletter is the old one, so there'll be a new bioletter there, the bioletter will come back to you because it comes back with the nominations. So.
I was gonna say, you've only been a treasurer of the board?
Yep, I said, they they put in the old one, but I'll have the new one there because everyone has to go in and sort of accomplish.
Oh, being treasurer is a noble position.
Any director still?
Well, like you said, I think the more bird dogs we have on the committees, the more better, so great.
Okay, public comment? Can I have a motion to approve um Director Saunders? Nominate him for Senator L A F C O? So move. Who did?
Thornborough moved.
Second, seconded by Director Stovall. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Uh Director Stovall.
Aye.
Director Saunders.
Aye.
Treasurer Thornborough.
Aye.
Nice, President Seaman.
Aye.
And President McDonald.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously five to zero. Thank you.
It's it's Seaman.
Okay.
You gotta do the same thing.
There we go.
Freedom.
Uh, act. Oh, sorry, oh, action item C, concurring nomination to the Executive Committee of Association of California Water Agencies, Joint Powers Insurance Authority, J P I A.
Uh we were, we uh were reached out to by the Calaveras County Water Authority, and they require a group of other members to uh support a candidate for the Executive Committee at J P I A, so it cannot be a unilateral nomination, it has to come from three different uh agencies. A Calaveras County Water District is a neighbor to our south. They're uh also a rural agency. Uh Mr. Scott Ratterman is one of their board members and is seeking a a spot on the Executive Committee. Uh what you have in front of you is a resolution recommending his uh placement upon that executive committee, and uh we would send over a resolutions from our board recommending him for uh a nomination to the boards. Again, this is not a guaranteed spot, he was supposed to run for this position. Um but it does have to come from multiple different agencies, so that would be the one thing there.
We have no comments or questions from the board, the public? May I get a nomination to nominate Scott Ratterman as a nominee for the.
I give the motion to uh support his nomination supporting our um other uh mountain family, Gloria, uh, even together.
Thank you, do it, can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Director Seaman seconds the motion. May I get a roll call, both these?
Director Stovall.
Aye.
Director Saunders.
Aye.
Treasurer Thornborough.
Aye. Why'd you say that again?
Treasurer Thornborough.
I'm close enough, aye.
Aye.
And President McDonald.
Aye.
The motion order is their first time, she's doing a great job.
Yeah, motion passes unanimously five to zero.
Like, tea?
Yeah, that's it, my guess.
I can't see her.
Oh, she's right here.
Oh, yeah, that's helpful.
I'm working on it, that's her right there, see?
She is.
There we go, but but she's not important, you all are important.
Item number, letter D. Item letter D, this uh consideration legislation positions for various Assembly and Senate bills, I hand this over to Nick.
I guess, um I'm gonna also uh uh ask the legislative leader for the district Director Saunders to help me out if I miss anything. Um, we have in front of you a series of bills, both to support and uh oppose. Uh did it this way, as uh coalition letters come up, we would like to have direction from the board to be able to sign on to coalition letters that uh either support or oppose the various um uh legislative bills, and there's also an initiative in there. Uh what uh you will also uh as a district, put together a direct letter to these different uh uh committees, uh authors, any any person who will listen to these uh uh bills. So I'll go through them very quickly. Uh and as as of today, uh the water, the Aqua Water Rights Proposal is actually a dead issue, so that one will not be something we can support in this term. Uh it was actually canceled uh Thursday last week, unfortunately did not get support from the Legislative Committee that needed to move forward. So that is something that we don't need to consider for now. We're gonna continue to work on it, and then we'll maybe come back later. Uh S B twenty-three, this is a sponsored bill by Aqua that they're asking for support to, and I recommend we do, so S twenty-three answers this call to action about opposing specific ideas enabling California to streamline the regulatory permitting process for water supply and flood risk reduction projects without compromising environmental protections. So for all of these bills, we attached any of the language for any of the constituents, for any of the board members, it would have been a five hundred page. Just one staff report, we did not do it this way. So I gave a brief overview, this is a sponsored bill by Aqua, it's more or less to uh streamline the environmental process for some of these flood control projects. Uh the next one, S B six, create climate resiliency and flood protection bond act of twenty twenty-four. So this bill would enact the Climate Resiliency and Flood Protection Bond Act of twenty twenty-four, which if approved by the voters, would authorize a sale of four point five billion dollars in general obligation bonds. This bill would provide for the submission of these provisions to the voters in November, at the November fifth twenty twenty-four statewide general election. So this is a uh a bond, a water bond, that would give uh the ability to sell these bonds to fund water projects, and it would uh bring funding into the district uh for potential tanks, potential uh canal lining, piping, all of the things that we've talked about today. Uh S B eight, six, seven, drought and water resiliency, water wildfire, forest resilience, coastal resilience, extreme heat mitigation, biodiversity, natural based climate solutions, climate smart agriculture, and park creation and outdoor access bond act. Uh I'm not gonna read, this is just another bond act, it's a similar bond to the previous one, this was actually uh submitted originally in uh uh twenty twenty, what was the uh?
Twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-one, it was uh Eduardo Garcia out of the Coachella Valley.
It was pulled because there was uh a glut of of money within the budget, we had a budget surplus. So it was pulled because there was no need to have a a bond act when there was a budget surplus. Uh now that there's a budget deficit, we are seeking a bond for water projects. So this one is is notable uh due to the wildfire and forest resiliency portion of this. Uh and and Aqua has been working very closely with the author to increase the amount of of water and forest resiliency money, not increase the bond total, but the portions that go to wa- water forest resiliency wildfire. Uh A D sixty-two statewide water storage expansion, so this is a uh it's more of a conceptual uh plan, policy of increase of of forcing the state to encourage its members and its different water districts and different regions to increase water storage. It's it's really stinks, we always have these droughts where we're like, man, we would really need some more water storage, and it's a great idea, and then we always have these blots of water and people are like, eh, we don't need no water storage, we have all this water. And so we need to be able to marry those two things together, and so when we have the glut of water, we have someplace to park it, someplace to put it so that we can utilize it when it's dry, and so this is going to help codify that idea throughout the state. Uh the next one is uh A D two ninety-seven wildfires local assistance grant program, so this is a a a a a unique, this is not a actual, you know, grant program, but what it does is authorize uh a district like us who may not have a lot of money to do forest work, wildfire work, it gives a a money at the front that can be uh given to the district and doesn't need to be reimbursed, it's it's a grant program that allows some of this funding to go out to the districts without having to have uh the district put the money into the kitty first and then get reimbursed later. Uh then A D fifteen sixty-seven, safe drinking water, wildfire protection, drought pre- uh preparation, flood protection, extreme heat mitigation, and Workforce Development Act of twenty twenty-three. So again, this is another bond. Um typically, the way these work is they go in with multiple bond vehicles. And then uh one from the Assembly pops out, one from the Senate pops out, and at the very end, they will typically marry them together. And that is what goes on the referendum for the the people to vote for, so it's good to support all of them. It's good to have backing, because if you don't support one and it ends up to be the winner, then you kind of look like, you know, why didn't you support this one? So uh we're gonna basically say, you know, we agree with all of them, we definitely need more funding. We're a small district, we have big projects, we don't have money to to fund all those projects, so that's why we're gonna support this. Now. Those are the support ones, I'd like to go on to the opposed ones. So when we do this, uh when we uh there is no resolution for this, because I, we don't need to have a resolution for supporting these, but what we'll do is, is you're you're basically uh voting to allow the support positions to go out and the opposed positions to go out based on the staff report, so what you have in front of you. So the Initiative nineteen thirty-five, uh I may actually turn this one over to uh Director Saunders, he's a little bit more versed on this one, and he's been dealing with it a little bit more directly, so uh do you want to go ahead and uh uh talk about the importance of this one?
Yes, this is the one that we were from the last uh two years, it's a basically going to be a ballot proposition, and basically will change the California Constitution to codify that anything that requires an increase in rate, tax, pay, or anything, has to be done by Prop two eighteen. So like what we're talking about now is if uh one of our upcoming items, something like uh dealing with how to put in uh connection fees. These would no longer be considered something you can just raise, it would have to go through a Prop two eighteen process, so they are gonna pretty much put a significant uh difficulty for any special district, any fire district, any city or anything to kind of raise money if everything has to go through a Prop two eighteen process, we would be so handicapped, we couldn't do anything without having to have a whole Prop two eighteen process just to do something like add a different uh rate to a fee that we're doing, so.
Sounds like this is somewhere they don't want to rock the boat, they want to sink the boat.
It would, it's it's pretty well a non-starter for most, most government agencies, there's gonna be a lot of pushback against this one. So I would say we're uh joining the bandwagon, so to speak.
When's it going to be on the ballot?
It would be on the ballot in twenty twenty-four if they do not pull it, uh they have up to June to decide if they will pull it or not, and I also uh the people that uh put it in, so they
Oh, really?
Yeah, so the California, um what is it, the?
Taxpayer protection.
Protection. So they are basically, the California Business Roundtable, they basically got the signature now, so now it's up to them to decide if they're going to keep it or not, if they keep it, then it will be on the ballot. They have up to June thirtieth to decide if they're going to pull it or not, seeing that they didn't have enough signatures and got an extension and worked so hard. They have up to June thirtieth to decide if they're going to pull it or not, seeing that they didn't have enough signatures and got an extension and worked so hard to get all the signatures. I don't think they were going to pull it, that is correct.
So now the only twenty twenty-four.
Yep, and I do have an email to read on this, so uh he did want to come into public comment when it went long, so uh. Past President uh Dave Rodman came on, he brought our CSDA representative for this area, so he wanted to thank uh. Thank the district for us opposing uh the position on this initiative, this is one of the CSDA priorities, so he's uh glad that we are joining the CSDA in the opposition if we choose to.
He's right, so I know. He's vice president.
No, he's a. He's a he's a past president of the board, but he he also works for a CSDA of the a field representative for uh the Sierra Network.
You know, you talked to me, June twenty twenty-one.
And that and that was the last time we saw him?
It was yesterday, he wanted to let Mark Pundy wait longer, so we would have talked to him anyway.
Okay, and then uh the next, um I'm gonna talk about two of these together. Um there's three water right um bills that are out, and they are. Uh you you heard me speak of the Aqua Water Right Legislation. Um that was to get in some language that we could maybe work around, unfortunately, it's it's such a contentious subject dealing with water rights. Um it was basically splitting Aqua in half between north, southeast and west. Um so our goal now is to to oppose all of the water right bills that are out. Uh so AB, or excuse me, SB three nine, three eighty-nine, statewide resource control board determination of water right, and then if you go to the last one, it's AB. Thirteen thirty-seven, and I apologize, I did not include it, and I would love to include it, but I will bring it back at the next one, it's AB four sixty, I believe. Uh the they are basically all an attack on the water right system, and being one of the older water districts in the state of California, we have what is referred to as senior water rights, so. Our water rights kind of uh trump other uh districts within the state, and if we do not. Uh fight these, those senior water rights could be taken away from us or s- uh severely limited. So and then the last one is uh AB three three eight, this is uh called Public Works Definition, it's actually not the title of it, I only included that. The AB three three eight is the correct title, um AB seventeen seventeen was the Public Works Definition that was uh submitted last year. Uh this is a. Change in what Public Works is defined as for um prevailing wages. More or less, any kind of firework, any kind of work in the forest would have to be paid as prevailing wage, and it would. Uh exponentially increase costs for these projects, so uh. At the behest of the Mountain County's Regional Water Association, we are, excuse me, Rural Water Association, apologize for that, uh we're. Uh they're opposing this and asking us to oppose it as well. Uh so with that, I would be happy to take any questions about any of these, but our recommendation is to support the ones we're supporting, oppose the ones we're opposing. And I will bring back the other water rights one, and I apologize for not including it, I thought I I I got them all, but there's so many, yes.
Oh, thank you, usually give me the hit. So on on AB three thirty-eight, does that have a conflict with the union?
No. It's not anything to do, it's only for contractors, it's not any work here, prevailing wage only has to do with, like uh when we hire a con- an outside contractor.
Correct, and then you have to pay prevailing wage of the area, if they're bringing them in from from small.
So the union is only, we don't have to pay prevailing wage to our union workers, we we would.
Okay.
It's to the contractors.
Well, the other contract employees, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question, um four million acre feet additional storage capacity up to. What's that re- represent as a percentage of the state, and can you give me enough?
Of the state uh.
You know, like is this big, how much bigger than Folsom Dam or something?
Oh, also it was a half a million.
Huh?
Also it was five hundred thousand or so.
So this is up to four, so four.
Hundred million.
Four hundred million, four million, no.
Five hundred thousand is is.
It's four million.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be eight times the size of Folsom Lake or.
Correct, yes.
Don't pretend.
I answered that Chasse is three point five, Oroville's like three point two.
Lake Berry, yes, those two hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah, that's a smaller.
And this is also.
Eight sixty-two, sixty-two.
And this is also a bit of brown water and above for storage, so it's doesn't all have to be reservoirs. The other thing why it was pushed was um they did say that we were going to um. Work on having the storage, and it did sunset around twenty thirty or so, so they're just extending it to make sure that projects can get built in that time, because it takes a long time to get uh. That's a lot of buildings.
If we were to have a auxiliary storage facility in our district, would that include, is that part of the four million?
Could be, not not only that, but we also would be part of the Sacramento Regional Water Bank with any uh extra storage that we have as well, which may be federally uh, we're trying to get that federally approved. And that would automatically allow us to uh transfer water throughout the uh area based on D.
Mm-hmm, that's something we could utilize, some of our other water rights, such as the lake, the Bayside water.
Yes.
We could in lieu of kind of trade that water around and sort of, it's also gonna be addressed in our water transfer policy, is how we can, not necessarily just, we could we could. Both sell wet water, but we can also sell paper water.
What kind of water?
Paper water.
Wet water?
Wet water is actually physically delivered. Uh so so in the water industry, there's there's two different kinds of water transfers. I can either transfer you wet water, which is the transfer we did, where we actually moved water through the system, we actually released water from the dam, it went into Folsom, from Folsom, it went to Westlands. That's physical, they call it a wet water transfer. There's also what they refer to as a paper water transfer, so we own specific rights to like Loon Lake, we own the s- s- specific rights to the Bayside water. But we don't have any way to actually move water, so what we would we would be doing is we would do in lieu of moving water, we would say, you can take our access to this water. And that's now your water, so it's called a paper water transfer.
Hmm.
Correct, and it's all, it's it's a sale, uh a lot of times paper water sales are utilized for urban water management plans, when you have to be your annual supply and a desk. Supply, demand, so my gosh, annual supply assessment, uh criteria, which you basically have to have so much water in the kitty to be able to not. Go into conservation standards, extra countries.
Thank you. Shree.
Um I thought the Bayside water had a limitation that it had to be, so we have to have the water in Stumpy to be able to create.
Cor- correct, there there are ways of.
Okay.
Uh without getting into super specific theory in a board meeting, because it's like.
No, I know.
Super deep into the weeds, there's ways around kind of.
Okay.
Uh moving that water, so we can. Move, and it's like, I hate that word, but yes.
Legal.
Legal, oh, there we go.
Paper legal, yeah, wet legal.
So I get it, uh we can see the board, it's a board.
Yes, yes, so uh right, uh like to.
I would uh make the motion that we uh approve all of those legislations that we uh choose to uh. Support and those that we oppose, and there would be the district's positions on legislative items.
Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice President Seaman. Roll call vote, please.
Uh Director Stovall.
Hi.
Director Saunders.
Hi.
Redbird Thornbrow.
Hi.
Okay, uh VP Seaman.
Hi.
And President.
Hi. Motion passes unanimous five to zero, moving on to. Line item E, consider adopting the following policies and amendments.
The the next two, I'll uh do a quick overview, I'll uh turn it over to any policy committee members for comment. The first one, the annual update of the Injury Illness Prevention Program, this is a uh. This is a plan that we you we submit to our insurance providers, the JPIA, uh to. More or less uh safety, it's a safety program that we have in place, there's not a lot of comment or a lot of changes that can be made to this. This is uh for the board to receive this, for a resolution to uh show that you have reviewed. Uh you see the IIPP, and then as uh was stated in the past, that there's never been a. Report back, we actually received the comments back from the. Uh JPIA with a few comments and a few things that we as a staff are now implementing into our uh. Program, and I mean, just like turn over to Adam Brown, just for a brief uh overview of those comments and the changes that we're putting in, do you have that in front of you?
I do not have in front of me.
Okay, I can go ahead and do, so more or less, there was a uh an updated uh portion of our uh. Employee evaluations that uh will go over the safety of how how safe our employees are. And the other uh correction is um. So.
I believe it was some uh recording um the training.
Oh, yes, that's what, yes, yeah, so we're gonna more, I think it's a sign in chief, who was attending, yeah, so it's more than more or less record keeping. So we have already addressed those those corrections, those changes, uh it looks as though when we submit in June, July. We don't get the report back till February, so we'll put that on the annual calendar when we receive this back, so who knows, it takes them seven months to to review it, I thought it'd be like one or two, maybe three months. But we will definitely have this as a reoccurring annual update uh to the board.
Thank you.
So I would uh. Move on to the teleconference policy.
Let me decide, sure, go ahead.
Do, I'd like to do both policies, and then we can address the both at the same time, that's okay. Uh the teleconference policy, uh this is actually uh in reference to the AB two four four nine, so. Uh our Director Thornbrow is able to join us via Zoom because of this policy, it is a state law that was enacted. Uh to coincide with. More or less takes the place of AB three sixty-one, it's a little bit different, it's I I say take the place, it's kind of a loose term, take the place. It's a different uh workaround for video conferencing and teleconferencing Brown Act, so we don't uh uh.
Compliance, yeah.
Compliance, or a great word, thank you, uh what it allows for is two meetings per year, a director and. Uh attend via Zoom as long as it is noticed at the beginning of the meeting, as long as the uh director has. You know, as was stated at the beginning, you know, you you saw our attorney, uh do you have anybody in the room, anybody over eighteen? You kind of just have to go through the whole like uh process to uh have this person vetted, um and then. This policy will just adopt the government code sections that were put into place by the the Senate bill. Or excuse me, the Assembly, I apologize for that, uh I would then open it up for any kind of questions, I know we had one from the audience on the IIPP, but uh. From the board, if you guys would like to have any questions.
I had a question in regard to the agenda item. A E, we have an attachment four and an attachment two. Um is one what we're voting for, and the other is what currently exists, because. I I was confused by having the two.
Those are what we're voting for, so the different, the both resolutions will be voted on as one item. The four and the two are just the separate policies, accepting the separate policies.
Okay, because they look real similar, but they're different, one says governmental agency, and the other one says board and so on.
Uh yeah, it's just it's just resolutions, except that they do different policies.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add before uh going to the public for the teleconference policy, we wanted to keep it uh, the language is. Well, mirroring the government code, so if the government show changes, then we automatically know which sections we remove or switch in, so. The two areas match AB three sixty-one, with the uh emergency one with sunsets in. Twenty twenty-four and uh AB twenty-four forty-nine sunsets in twenty twenty-six.
On teleconference?
Yes, yes. Hmm, unless Mars passed to extend them, it's been.
There is another uh assembly bill, I believe, this year, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there there uh is another one to. Move this, I think, more in perpetuity, but I don't. I don't have it, I apologize for that.
Problem is the appetite and the most uh legislators would really want to be in person, so.
Maybe you could turn it over to the public at this time, unless there's other questions.
Shree.
I'm looking at other districts, very obviously do that, um there's one district that had five hundred and fifty-three days without a working rate. Do we have any type, maybe that should be included in the ops report? Or no?
I think we could definitely include something like that.
Because that saves on insurance and.
Yeah, we do actually have uh insurance um lead uh leadership awards, uh we do get those every.
But doesn't it help your insurance rating too?
Yes, yes.
And then on the uh teleconferencing, um when did that take effect? So it says January first.
The 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 state law took effect January first, this is an adoption of.
Unless we adopt this, then it's.
Okay, well, it applied to the board once it was law, but.
This is just a policy of the district to uh to uh observe it, basically.
Okay, so does it apply to the committees?
Yeah.
Yes, well, the last. One in the committee meetings, only one person was in the room, and the other two were on finance, I think it was.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, so so it's moving forward.
Okay, I'm just checking.
So, just to be clear, AB two four four nine applies to all legislative bodies across the state, unless they opt specifically adopt a policy opting out of it and prohibiting participation. And so this policy really, it's not implementing it because it already exists and is available, but it puts it in more layman's terms. And really spells out exactly what's required, because the government code unfortunately is not a super easy read.
Is our 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 committees considered Brown Act committees that would need to adhere to this policy? Or do because they are uh community committees, do they have any kind of uh leeway on this policy?
The only um committees that are not subject to Brown Act are temporary ad hoc committees, so. Every other committee, even if they're advisory because they're permanent, um they are subject to the Brown Act, and therefore AB two four four nine applies to.
Understood, thank you for that.
So February twenty-third's meeting, the requirement should be.
Um, sorry, March thirtieth, or oh, oh, I think, yes, yeah, there was, there was one.
Let's pay that down, how about the uh March sixteenth? Or not March, yeah, March sixteenth.
You had enough, I believe, you had, it has to be a quorum in person.
You have to have at least three, yeah, quorum in person and within the the boundaries of the district, and the people attending have to be within the boundaries. And then just to be clear, the just cause is limited to two, but if you're trying to attend under the emergency circumstances, it's unlimited. Um to the extent that you're not missing more than twenty percent of the meetings annually in a twelve month period.
So so we were uh due to inclement weather, we couldn't make it, so is that considered a what, nothing?
If if you don't have a quorum, then it's it's no good, and you 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 can't do it at all, but if. You have a forum that are present in person and two people, up to two people can't make it. Um because of inclement weather, I then it's up to the board, I think, in that circumstance to. Decide whether that's just cause or not, that wouldn't fall under the emergency circumstances, those are outlined.
Could have, it would work in a s- this situation, because the governor did declare this district in a state of emergency, and then locally, if we declared it a state of emergency. Then we would be under emergency.
Yeah, but then you'd be under the technically the AB three sixty-one until that sun gets.
But you can also um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, you can also um, much like. In the beginning of this meeting, we accepted Director Thornbrow, and we voted for him to to more or less still be a board member. You can ask those folks who are not able to attend the meeting to attend as general members of the public, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina.
That's that's correct, like let's say if there was an item on this meeting that had to go through, you were concerned about connectivity issues because of the storm or whatever it was. Then the board can vote to say, look, we're not going, we don't want you to be to be a participating board member, because if we cut out, we don't have connectivity. Then we're not going to be able to do the necessary business that we need to do, and so you can certainly do that, or if. You know, you happen to know, not that any of you would do this, the board members on vacation in Hawaii. You know, you happen to know, not that any of you would do this, the board members on vacation in Hawaii and. That's not just cause, then you're welcome to tell them that that's not just cause. We're not gonna allow you that. But they can still stay on. Completely, just as any other member of the public, they just can't vote.
Uh, how does that work with um?
Can I have a question?
Clarification question, I guess. I don't want to be first one so long.
No.
Fortunately, President's all in last.
I want to know.
What was last?
Today's meeting.
Huh?
I have, we, you know, we have a meeting on Thursday.
That's what we're.
And so it's like, nobody knows kind of about this. That we're going to be putting in play.
But this is technically already in place. Yes. This is not anything we're doing to put anything in place. This is already supposed to be happening.
So then we need to have.
We will reach out to them.
And remember, we did announce last month that uh A B three sixty one, the state of emergency sunsetted in when was it uh? February twenty eight. Yes. So after that, we no longer have the COVID emergency. So that pretty much removed A B three sixty one for us.
So that's saying the finance.
Yes.
So if.
Of your.
So it's February. Basically, she's saying we were in compliance for the.
Yes, right. I'm just concerned about our.
Okay, so we didn't need to have the the board vote because that was a last minute call to meet, to have the have the meeting. I wish you said so.
Still in compliance.
Is still in compliance. Okay.
So moving forward, we will have to reach out to our irrigation meeting members and make sure that they're able to attend in person as much as possible. They can attend basically two out of the off, out of or. For just cause or or for whatever, whatever terminology is.
Mm hmm.
But the rest of them, they have to try to attend in person and you have to have a quorum in the room. In the physical room with the address. So this is the address that we have listed on our our agenda. There has to be a forum in this room. So you can also meet and like note of notice uh. Another location, say you wanted to be at the I O O F L. Two people wanted to meet there. You could notice that building. As one of the locations of the board meeting is being held, but since this is the address that's on it, the quorum has to be in person here.
And it's gonna be good weather.
Yeah, it is. Uh, Dirk at Thornborough.
Yeah, I'm gonna don't show.
Maybe.
Um Christina, can you explain the emergency on the weather thing? Because all the the stuff I read about it and then on the other board I'm in. Just cause and emergency are all personal items. None of them are are. Yeah, so where is this? Uh, you can do it if like the weather, you can't, you can't get there because we had all that snow.
Right, so that would be you would have to have some kind of uh. Local emergency or state of emergency in effect, which would then trigger the A B three sixty one guidelines, which wasn't specific to. I mean, it was implemented because of COVID, but it is specific to a proclaimed state of emergency or a local emergency. And so flooding, any anything like that, you can still uh. Go under A B three sixty one until it sunsets. And so my understanding is what's going through. The assembly right now is a solution to that issue to still allow for some. Kind of participation in emergency situations. It just won't be under A B three sixty one. So for right now until twenty twenty four. You can still in inclement weather if there's a local emergency declared. So I, so Nick and I discussed this when we. The more for the March sixth meeting because there was technically a local emergency declared for that storm, but it was, it was. Too late to um agendize it that way and to um notify the public.
Who who has to declare at what level does the emergency have to be declared? Could it be a local level, for example?
It could be local. I mean, you you as a local agency.
Or.
Can declare a state of emergency, but you, I mean, to get together and do that, it's more likely that the the O E S is gonna do it because county. They have someone assigned that can just declare a state of emergency without um convening a board.
Director Saunders.
Just to uh. Help you with that, we remember uh, I called a special meeting for us to declare a local emergency for the mosquito fire. And that was to allow staff to go to a different uh location in case it needed uh staff to. Because uh Georgetown was evacuated, so we did declare a local emergency. So it can be done. At the board level or county level, state or federal.
Yeah, big guy.
Okay.
To declare it, we would have to have a board meeting.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
If I can get to.
But if you're back related from your office, I think that you that would trump your uh need to appear at that office.
Yeah, under true emergency circumstances, there's a lot more leeway on a lot more things that we could talk about for the next forty five minutes. I mean, it's. It's a true emergency.
Okay, you can write along.
Yeah, uh we would just see that uh uh a motion.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, um I'd like to uh solicit a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three to update the. I I P P manual and.
And.
And to to. And then approve resolution twenty twenty three for teleconferencing policy.
Can I just say one thing? Can we get them to look alike?
No, that's the goal. They're gonna all be at the same.
Okay.
So both of them together, we can. Uh may I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Sorry. Um please take a roll call vote.
Uh Director Stovall.
I.
Director Saunders.
I.
Jennifer is Thornbrough.
Hi.
Vice President Seaman.
Oh.
And President.
I. Motion passes you, Dan, simply. Moving on to. Letter F, consider accepting Vectus D C as our federal advocate. And here we have Don Police.
Yeah.
Uh.
Thank you.
Said to me, all of you, you know, it's gonna, everybody here be okay?
Yes.
As we have a Don Police with us, he is with Vectus D C. Um, we did receive three different um requests or proposal. Um. By far, uh Vectus outweighed all of the other two and all of the advocacy that they were able to bring to us. Um. Don and his team are, Don is a managing partner, uh other teams that presented to us did not present us a managing partner. Uh we thought that was a valuable um. Need to somebody who was going to be invested in us as a district. Um, both him and his uh. Uh employee Ed Pucarello, who was one of our, one of his advocates is also working with us. They have both experience on Capitol Hill. Working with a variety of different uh legislators. I'll let them explain their background. Uh all three uh proposals came at the same cost. So that was kind of interesting that they were. Um all look talking to each other behind our backs, that totally good, but they all.
Collusion.
Collusion, it was all collusion. They all came at the same cost. Um. And uh uh I will just say that. Uh Vectus also came highly recommended by somebody that I have worked with in the past as a legislative analyst. So I will say that. Um, they they all around came in highly recommended. So Don, I'd love for you to do a quick introduction of you and. And maybe the rest of your team and and what services that you already have worked with us on and what you can work with us on in the future.
Yeah, no, thank you so much, Nicholas, and real pleasure to. Meet all of you and and again have this opportunity to to work with you all. Um. As Nicholas mentioned, I am the managing partner and head up the D C office for Vectus. Vectus D C specifically where we've been in business ten years as a bi-coastal firm. We have an office. Uh in Los Angeles near L A X and I've been heading up. Full time the D C office about half of that time. I had been commuting from California our first few years after our founding. And uh, you know, lobbying along with our two former members of Congress that uh founded it with us. Um. We are a boutique firm, not in price, as you heard from our acceptable bid, I think, but in terms of the the amount of clients we take in. I do want to be involved and I am involved in all of our firm's clients. Right now we're registered to lobby for about eighteen or twenty clients back here. Most of whom are California based. Uh I consider myself at least an honorary water buffalo. I've been doing water issues. Uh most of my career, I've been on and off Capitol Hill for thirty five years. I spent about half of my career in the San Diego County area as the district chief of staff. For a member of Congress down there where I was his point person on the Energy and Water Subcommittee of Appropriations and. Which he chaired at the time, that was Ron Packard, who served back in the eighties and nineties. And our experience was. Far and wide in water. We've done an Indian water rights settlement and helped negotiate that with the Department of Interior um that took a. Very long time, but we're able to complete that. We had a conjunctive use project with Camp Pendleton and Fallbrook Public Utilities, which is about the size. Same size district as you all are. Um, we've been working, as Nicholas knows, for many years now with. Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District and I really feel like I'm be become such a part of the Elsinore family. I. Have been with them about fifteen years and we've taken them from a, you know, brand new federal relations program to a point now where. They're quite well known within each of the major federal agencies that oversee water policy back here. Um namely, the Army Corps of Engineers, the U S Bureau of Reclamation, E P A. We've met frequently with U S D A as well and certainly the corresponding congressional committees and their staff as well. Uh, we're not flashy. We, you know, have a modest office. Ironically, it's in Georgetown in D C and I'm a graduate of Georgetown University. So I'd love to work for Georgetown P U D two for the sake that I wouldn't have to take my sweatshirt off if I. And um, as I said, I look forward, we've already had the pleasure of helping Nicholas informally. Prepare a couple of the community funding requests that have come out fast and furious over the the last couple of weeks. Um. That is not where we put our worth of the whole program that we hope to build with you. Earmarks are great. They're, they come and go. They're very good when they're here and we have members like our two senators right now that are willing to put them forward as well as your house member. But there's always an uncertainty depending on the size of the budget, whether there's going to be congressionally directed spending at funding at the end of the year. So what I'd say, I would love to and I look forward to sinking my teeth in with all of you, you know, as participating. Directors and of course with Nicholas's G M in getting to know intimately. The federal agencies back here that not only regulate you, but the the ones that spend the money. And I'll finish by saying, no matter what Congress does, one way or the other, as far as the budget, you've heard there's going to be a big debt limit in pass and everything else. The money is already out there and this is a key point for the bipartisan infrastructure bill that. Was enacted about, let's see, fifteen months ago. The money is already obligated and is going to be out there. So there's going to be. Almost weekly announcements from agencies like E P A, the Bureau of Reclamation, Army Corps. That there's, you know, I've, I like to say that the tube of toothpaste is quite full now. We used to have a kind of a backlog of projects. Now I've actually been getting some calls with folks from the Bureau of Reclamation saying, get me what you have if there are. Projects that are even, you know, forthcoming over the next year or two, we'd be really interested. So. I would love to work with you and, you know, love water issues. I speak the language and. I don't want to overwrite myself because I know the Water Buffalo Award at Aqua is such a huge thing. I don't want to say that I'm truly a water buffalo, but I've been working. Really close to thirty years on water issues, been involved with Aqua and Casa Casa and a lot of the other. Agencies, um I mean, are the other associations in their. D C fly-ins and I again would look forward to hosting you back here as well. I I'll just add, I am a Californian, as I mentioned, from San Diego. My wife's from up the road in the Redding Anderson area, familiar with your. Neck of the woods as well. Uh while our firm has mostly Southern California clients, we do have a few up north. We work with. The University of Pacific and its dental school in working on some healthcare issues with them and. We represent the Marine Mammal Center over in Sausalito and do a lot of work with them on kind of their offshore. Marine mammal issue. So sorry I took so long. Um, it's kind of late by my hour. I'm sorry if I feel filibustered a bit, but I'm happy to answer any questions and. Again, really happy to be considered, uh you know, to work with you.
And if I could just add. In in my experiences.
Yeah, it's coming. Mercy, mercy.
Can you have us?
I I'm still.
We lost that power for a second there, so I wanted to make sure. Everybody, um. Working with a federal advocate, it it's a, it's an extension of the district in in Washington, D C. Uh while I think, you know, having us in person would be better. It's more expensive. So uh something that I recommend and would like to see the district utilize is uh. Services of Vectus and allowing us to have that arm in Washington and allowing us to be put in front of some of these uh different agencies. So. Uh just to kind of go over, you know, so what we're doing federally right now, we're working with a FEMA grant right now, which is gonna help with mitigation. So that's a big one. Uh we have the Senate appropriations. We have a U S Bureau grant. There's all kinds of bureau money out there right now. And Don and his team can basically uh uh advocate for us to get additional funding. Uh and I'm just gonna add one more kind of a big thing. A reoccurring theme through Castle. Through my report, through Adam's report, through uh Latco report that we we saw a few months ago. Uh, we need another reservoir to to be redundant. And uh there's only one agency that would do that and that would be the Bureau of Reclamation. So uh we definitely need to have them. On our side and I believe Don and our team could put us there.
And Director Stovall?
If I recall, with the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, there's fifty billion dollars specifically earmarked for water projects stationwide is.
I think that's light.
Okay.
Uh, they, yeah, there's actually a, there's a Cali, there's a Western water component that I think is about in that level. I apologize. I don't have. All the, there's details in front of me. My colleague Ed Puccarella, who Nicholas mentioned is the guy that. Actually almost has all these bills memorized and has, you know, worked, worked on a lot of it, happy to, but as I said, there is a lot. There's. You know, just over the five years, well into the um three figure billions on the water side.
Well, it's glad to have a place at the table.
Yeah. And again, we get there. I'll I'll just keep adding. We monitor grants closely, but we also like to get ahead of the grants. We like to meet with the agencies before. The grants are actually announced because we find that's usually the biggest avenue of success. And I'll give the example with Elsinore that we started fifteen years ago, Water and Wastewater Agency. They had to try a couple of times before succeeding, but once they became known as a. Great investment by the federal agencies, they knew they were successful in executing the project for which they were granted money. They've become a very much a reliable source, you know, of. Funding and and they're well sought after. As I said, it, no exaggeration, I do get a lot of calls from both the regional offices and. D C offices of those agencies saying, you know, hey, does Elsinore have anything going on in this area? And then the same with a couple of the other. Smaller districts we've worked with down south, so.
Thank you. Director Saunders?
We also have a hydroelectric uh positivity plant.
Right, yeah.
They require um federal uh funding and assistance there and um. We did have the Water Smart Branch, so they have advocacy to continue with that and some some grants are almost uh. Prohibitive to get from a small district like the brick grants. They're almost impossible. So we were lucky to. Prehave to grant some FEMA, but other things that have so much money for water districts, we don't even get a foot in the door. So this is a. Big uh big plus for us if we can have this, especially since the district uh. Doesn't have the uh appetite to send us uh directly in person for now until we uh fix uh how we can fund our. Going to uh different advocacy stuff.
Okay, Director Seaman.
Um, how do you deal with uh like the money that goes from? The federal government to the state? Do you have, or like if there's funding that have gone to state agencies? Do you also help us deal with that?
Uh, no, we don't. To be very straightforward, we do not have a Sacramento office. Um, we generally. There's a variety on the water side. A lot of it is direct and a lot of it has to be authorized directly by the federal government. For example, programs through the Bureau of Reclamation and the Army Corps are pretty much direct. To the districts, you know, and the Army Corps, especially in its aquatic restoration and environment, you know, the. The essential parts of the Army Corps, those that get sent through Sacramento. There are a handful and especially, but I'm trying to recall mostly on the transportation side and on things like. The other, the director mentioned BRIC, that's, that's a program that there's a big chunk of money that goes to Sacramento and then gets offloaded after that. But I do not, we do, we do not have a Sacramento office and I'd be happy to provide some recommendations, but you know, we. We're strictly a D C shop and then we occasionally will work with regional agencies from the federal level out in California. from the federal level out in California. I've gotten to know a lot of the regional directors as well, both in Sacramento and, and down south and Temecula.
Okay. In our, in our, I will just plug. I would say Don is maybe selling himself a bit short there because our hazard mitigation grant goes through FEMA and then goes to CalOES and FEMA still has the ultimate say as to which projects get selected. So that is still something that can be advocated for. It's very similar to a BRIC program. It's, it's just a different acronym.
Yeah, I totally agree with you because the, uh, the BRIC program is also going to be better. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the, I can't, I keep getting that one mixed up. It's that H M G P, Hazard Vittigation Grant Project. And BRIC B R I C program, which is building resilience in, in communities, something along those lines.
Building resilient infrastructure. But I know my, I thought I know my acronyms, but
Any, uh, Cherie, public comment?
Um, are we staying at the forty-eight thousand and if it goes over that or looks like in six months and?
It's a, it's a monthly, uh,
Four thousand.
Four thousand, four thousand.
Okay. And then also when, how often will he be following up? And, um, well, either by a reporter on, you know, video to?
So we can set how often he reports to the board. I will be working with him very directly, uh, as was stated. Is, uh, Ed Puparello and I put together all of the Senate Appropriation Forums and they were helpful in reviewing uh, those even before, you know, this being on contract. So that was a great, uh, help that they offered to us. Uh, however, often the board, I would say maybe quarterly or whatever you at the board's discretion and available to come to a land with communities. Uh, yeah, I, I, Don, would you guys be opposed to sitting in on a grant committee meeting and just, uh, poking your head in?
Oh, absolutely. No, in fact, I, I just want to say that we went through this horrible COVID period where, you know, again, things got moved online, but on the other hand, it's gotten us very used to. And you're, you know, it's, I'm happy to attend as many, if, you know, as long as I'm available. Usually at the times are available, I'm done for the day in DC. It's almost nine thirty now. So I mean, my meetings are done. I'm happy to hop on anything. And, uh, if, if I'm not available, my partner Ed is, you know, much the same. He's on Eastern time as well and we'll, uh, we'll return the favor by maybe asking you to attend a meeting with us sometimes at eight thirty in the morning in DC and no, so to answer the question, uh, one thing about being a small firm and again, and I'm the managing partner, Ed gives a great report too. We try to do with succinctness and common sense and, you know, if you want to have us pop on, happy to do a short update, long update. And, uh, you know, we're, we're there. I just, just rather is not get bogged down on a lot of like legislative grids and all like you'd get from your associations because in Washington, that's not as valuable. Just say that straightforward because Washington only ends up enacting maybe one percent of the bills that are introduced. So we don't do the like monitor, follow that, that kind of thing. What I like to do is cut to the project and work from the project, your goals, and then trying to make the funding fit from the agencies. That's what I like to report on because otherwise I could, you know, have a lot of make work reading for you all and, you know, but it would be like the end of the year. Twenty bills end up getting enacted and, you know, but those will be the bills that'll fund your programs. So.
And, and, and Don and I will, uh, or work on our capital improvement plan. So he'll, he'll have an understanding of what projects we are overseeing in that one to ten year, you know, window. So he has something that he can work from. It's not going to be like him picking projects for us. It's going to be us telling him what we have and then he can go to those agencies as he stated, you know. I would like to become one of those agencies where they're like, hey, does Georgetown have anything going on right now? Uh, you know, that's definitely an experience that I've had in the past where I've gotten money. Just like, hey, we need you to spend a couple of million dollars and then I, I can guarantee you that we at the district here will be able to, to do that.
Real quicky. How many employees do you have? Is it just you and your partner or?
Uh, we've got a total on both coasts, about fifteen. Uh, but in DC, I actually have, I always say three and a half employees. I have one that shuttles back and forth. We don't cut him in half, but he's goes back and forth between California and, uh, DC, but full time in my office in Georgetown. I've got two full-time employees. And then again, um, two folks that are kind of bi-coastal. One lives in Los Angeles, comes back here. The other actually lives in San Diego, but has been with me for sixteen years and she's a grant specialist. So she's somebody I hold tightly to and she, you know, she's also somebody who's very available at any time. So.
Thank you.
Okay. With that public comment section is closed. And ask for a motion to authorize.
Put in the motion yourself.
What's that?
But I make the motion.
I would like to make a, no, okay. Authorizing the general manager.
I wouldn't say, no, just ask for my.
I make a motion to approve Victus DC LLC for federal advocacy services.
Motion was seconded by Director Saunders. Ask for roll call vote for.
Uh, Director Stovall?
Hi.
Uh, Director Saunders?
Hi.
Treasurer Thornborough? Uh, Vice President Seaman?
Hi.
And President.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously.
So this means we all have to wear Georgetown sweaters.
I should have worn my sweatshirt.
Yes. So, so I was Georgian's town, actually.
Well, you could always just give him a G-Pod sweatshirt.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. And again, wonderful to meet all of you. Look forward to seeing you in person in DC or I'll come out there sometime too. So.
I went to school across, um, across from your alumni. So, um, Howard, our university, uh, medical graduate. So.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Great. Yeah. Right across staff. Good. Well, I hope to see you back here then. That'll be good. So. All right. Great to meet all of you and thanks, thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Okay. Item nine.
What? Uh, so item nine is, uh, our public hearing. Uh, we can receive a bit of discussion on item A and then open up public hearing to hear our urban water management plan. Um, this is something that has been at the last couple of board meetings. I don't think we need to belabor this much anymore. There is, uh, a series of comments that we received from the state that we have addressed in re-adopting the urban water management plan. One was brought up previously. It was the, uh, SPX uh, requirements, which we are now in compliance with, um. Um, and all of the notes have been, uh, put onto our website. And we, uh, it's a sixty day period that we have to receive any public comments before it is adopted. Uh, and we will, uh, to post this around as, as, as required. So Adam, do you have any?
Yes, we did receive any comments. We've had it posted for, for the sixty days.
Okay. So no public comments. Uh, so you can open up the public hearing, receive any public comments today.
Okay. Open up this public hearing at six twenty-two PM for public comment.
No comment.
No comment?
Thank you.
Okay. I close this public hearing at six twenty-two thirty. Um, and may I get a, uh,
Yep, I have a board, uh,
Board discusses. Yes.
Yeah, no, I was just going to make a motion.
I have. I think I have to print this out. But I got a bunch. So, um, well, one thing is, uh, thank you. I know we did do a lot of updating. We do have the, uh, new level of STP twenty-one thousand two hundred and six. And all the tables do reflect the new safety yield, which is thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-eight feet. And all of it reflects the DIA total, which is now eleven thousand twenty-seven. So thank you for those updates. Um, I did have some things. So we do have impacts of wildfires, but we only mentioned the King Fire. We did go through the mosquito fire and none of that's on there. So I don't know.
Yeah, we're not gonna. Sweet. I would like to update that in twenty twenty-six when that comes back because it's so recent. It's hard to understand what the impacts are as of this moment.
All right. Chapter six page reports, a seven dash four. We have stormwater capture. It says we have no plans or consider to plan for any stormwater capture. So are we not considering to do an extra reservoir or possible diversion?
So that, that means we have like a plan in place.
Place. Okay. And then, uh, I did talk about, uh, accessory dwelling units every time we brought this up. So I don't know if you want to put it one line with, uh, the man that there was a possibility that there could be increased demand due to ADUs, which we can see was out having, uh, increase in household or parcels. Cause that's a possibility.
I would say also address that in twenty twenty-six when we have the data and that's what I discussed with Adam because we only have two now and back then we have more.
And then the other thing I would add for the irrigation committee. So right now our policy on water shortage contingency plan is based on shortening the irrigation season. So things that you want to look at, because I know, um, there were several people on the irrigation committee that wanted to see if there was another way. So one of the strategies and processes you can go through is find out if there's a way you can guarantee those percentage losses. So it's the ten percent and twenty percent for stages one and two with other means than, uh, shriveling the irrigation season.
So, uh,
No, this has nothing to do with, yeah.
We're going to pull a lot of the raw water out of the next urban water management plan because that is not a requirement of an urban water management plan. So any of the raw irrigation water requirements are not going to be part of the next plan. So I, I, I want you to, all that.
Part of this plan.
So sorry.
But it's part of this plan.
And I, it's hard to pull it out. That's a wholesale change.
So that was for changing for next time. When you're taking it out next time then you gotta go.
We aren't going to be here.
Where are you going? It's only three years. You just got elected.
You'll be here.
Uh, is that it, Director Saunders? Okay. Thornborough's good. Okay. Can I get a motion?
So, uh, I make a motion that we, um, accept the, uh, urban water management plans and.
Is it the plan and the revisions for the plan?
Well, it's, it's an actual, it's an actual readoption of it.
Yes.
Can I get a second motion?
Second.
Second by Director Stovall.
I'll just amend that and the water shortage contingency plan.
There, it's, it's one document, but they are called out separately.
Okay. Um, can take a roll call vote, please, Liz.
Director Stovall?
Hi.
Director Saunders?
Hi.
Treasurer Thornborough?
Hi, and you're getting better at that.
Vice President Seaman?
Hi.
And President McCallum?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to accessory dwelling unit general fees.
So this was, uh, also addressed at the last board meeting. This is an adoption of the ordinance to uh, lead to make more leniency to accepting ADUs, uh, per state law. Uh, I would just like to turn it over to Adam if he wants to have anything. Nothing has changed since this was enacted the last thirty days. We cleaned up a few of the language points that, um, were suggested by the board. Um, and if you have any to add.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think so. Um, I think it was just cleaning up, um, in, within the ordinance, um, instead of us determining criteria, it was accounting determining criteria. So that's, that's a part of the ordinance and just um, pretty straightforward. Just, you know, updating that portion of it. Uh, no, no changes.
So before you go, we're going to open up the public hearing.
Okay. Like to open this up, public hearing at six twenty-seven PM.
You have to be better in this.
Okay. Um. I'd like to close the public hearing at six twenty-seven thirty. Uh, for public comment. Uh, board?
I'd like to confirm in here, it says, um, article two, number one, I believe it says a connection fee for the meter is, uh, for the same parcel shall be less than fifty percent of the value identified. Um, has been to do with, um, so many square feet of auxiliary um, livable space provided. Is that something that we're responsible for? That's a county.
Oh, county. Everything we're saying here is the county is we're, we're deferring to all the county standards.
And also just to confirm that when there is a connection, that additional connection would still be responsible to pay the base charge, the water consumption and the supplemental fee.
That's only if there is a second connection. This is, this is, uh, allowing one connection with.
For both. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
There is a, uh, I will just clarify for the record. There is an ability to have an ADU. It would not be considered an ADU anymore if the property is of the same size as the main dwelling. So the rule states your main dwelling, your ADU can be fifty percent or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is larger. So say your house is twenty-four hundred square feet, you can have a twelve hundred square feet ADU. However, if for some reason you want to put on a second property that's two thousand square feet, it actually is deemed a second residence is a different category. So that has nothing to do with this ordinance. And that is just for the record. This is only if it is registered as an ADU, which is a specific definition within the law.
Thank you.
And you have an eighty number square foot and a twelve hundred ADU. Oh, so it has to be double the size. Oh, it would be nine hundred.
Fifty percent.
Nine hundred. Okay.
For the changes?
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept its orders along for the, uh, changing or connecting fees for, uh, accessory dwelling units.
Can I get a second motion?
Second.
Second by Director Stovall. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Director Stovall?
Hi.
Director Saunders?
Hi.
Treasurer Thornborough?
Hi.
Uh, Vice President Seaman?
Hi.
And President McCallum?
I. Motion passes unanimously.
Donald?
Yeah.
Uh, can I just make, uh, some comments to the public before we go to our close session because they may not be coming back after that close session?
Sure. I'm just going to request for future meeting agenda, but, um, sure.
So it's going to thank, uh, Cherie and Larry for coming and their comments. And, uh, because it's public comments, we can't really, uh, discuss or comment it on them, but, uh, we can let Steve know that, know that, uh, we'll, uh, update Larry on some of the things that, uh, he was, uh, asking for in the meeting and, uh,
Oh, Steve, well.
And we'll continue to check on those, what did I?
And I know.
And I can't believe you remember the June meeting.
It's like a sticky tab of information. I was at the bank. I remembered account numbers, but I couldn't tell you their name. Okay, thank you. I don't know.
Oh, you're welcome. Um. For him.
Well, it's four thousand.
Okay. Um. Item ten, board member requests for additions to future meeting agendas.
As I said, we'll put the, um, asset management, uh, on the policies committee. So we're going to get that while they're putting any stuff on the info.
Do you have that, Liz? Do you have that list? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank, uh, Director Thornborough for being our, uh, teleconference scene. Test, not, not test dummy, text director for purposes of illustration. Good.
I was waiting for that test dummy remark.
Yeah, good plan.
And he can do it.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay. Now, um, like to, uh, slow, uh, adjourn.
Maybe the items that they have, the public has been going there to comment on.
Should I do this in a public forum?
You may not be the other public.
No, I know, but we've never commented before.
You, uh, some, sometime we have.
Okay. So the, uh, items for the closed session to be addressed are pending litigation regarding the. Okay, so the, uh, items for the closed session to be addressed are pending litigation regarding mosquito fire, pending litigation Craig versus GDPUD and personal matters, general manager evaluation, six-month review.
I could comment on that because he didn't start on.
So it's terminating. It's like two days before.
Yeah, so this time I'd like to have the room cleared for closed session. And uh, stop the, stop the recording.
To the zoo. Uh, Christina, you didn't zoom?
Yes, I got this.
Geez, we're on full screen now.
Okay.
Infinity screen.
I wait for that to pop back on.
Some reason, uh, the internet's down. I haven't been able.
My phone was down.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do you know, um, the whole cell tower? Our whole like cell system was down.
Yesterday.
You, you couldn't do anything.
It says it's up. It says it's on.
Now it's on, but yesterday it was down.
But it's not connecting still.
It said I had full signal and nothing. You could call, you couldn't do anything. I was like, I was.
That's what it is now. I got full signal, can't get out.
So frustrating.
Okay. Okay. Ready? We're now opening up this meeting from the closed session. It's now eight PM. And all three items, there's nothing to report out on. So with that, um, I'd like to, uh, announce the next meeting date will be eleventh, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And, um, anybody else have anything to?
Make a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn. Go ahead. Oh, uh, roll call vote?
It's okay.
Okay, all right. I, 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 motions unanimous. It's media adjourned.
And that's the one thing I even adjourn that we can. Adjourn, I still live by, um.